Okay, Madam Clerk, I see a quorum. Are we ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, we are convening the regular meeting of the Richmond City Council. Call the roll, please.
The time is 6:35. Councilmember Bates?
Present.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Present.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember McGlaughlin?
I'm here.
Okay. Councilmember Willis?
Here.
And Mayor Butt?
Here.
All councilmembers are present. If some of the agenda statement of conflict of interest, are there any? Hearing none. Item C is agenda review. Are there any changes? No changes to the agenda, so I'll read the announcement. Anyone may make an oral comment, even if a written comment has previously been submitted. However, each speaker may only raise their hand once to make one oral public comment per agenda item. As we move through the agenda, I will announce the next item number and ask individuals who would like to address the council to raise their hand. After the item is read into the record, the request to speak period on the item will be closed. We will hold open forum very shortly, so individuals who would like to address the council under open forum should raise their hand now. To comment by video conference, click on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and select the raised hand button. To comment by phone, press the star and the number nine. And just while we repeat these instructions in Spanish.
Anybody who has sent their comments by writing or also can give an oral comment. However, each person will lift their hand for talking only once per agenda. While following the order of the agenda, the next number and topic of the agenda will be announced. And we will ask that everyone lift their hands if they want to give their comments to the councilmen. You cannot sign up after the municipal secretary finishes reading the number and the agenda. In a short, we will have the open forum, open forum. If you want to give your comments, lift your hand now. To comment by computer, select the participant on the bottom of your screen. And select the option that says raise hand to lift your hand. To comment by telephone or prime star nine. Thank you.
It was kind of muted. I muted it, but it kind of distorted a little.
Okay.
So we need to address that. KCRT, can you please address that?
We are working on it.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is a report from the city attorney of final decisions made during closed session.
There were no final decisions made during closed session.
Item E is a report from the city manager.
Thanks. Good evening. I've got two different topics for you. The first one is regarding street sweeping. And we have been asked by the city council to come back to you all with some options about how we encourage folks to move their cars for street sweeping. And I just wanted to let you know that we, first of all, we're going to be delayed in any formal presentations to the council since we are in a transitioning period of getting a new public works director. So we do have a new public works director who will be arriving in April. And I really need his help in having there be some comprehensive information researched and prepared for you. However, I know that we've got some wonderful community members who are helping in various neighbors trying to encourage folks to move their cars for street sweeping days. And in that process, it's been discovered that we don't have a very user-friendly map on our or way of finding out exactly what the street sweeping schedule is on our website. So we are in the process of trying to make it easier, more user-friendly for people to be able to know exactly what side of the street and which day the street sweeping is happening. And that work is underway. We're going to try and make it interactive. And that too will be ready hopefully in April. It's actually a little more work than I had anticipated it would be. So I also then, on a second topic, wanted to let folks know that as a sign of the times, that we're still in a pandemic, we are about to launch our second annual virtual egg hunt. So we'll be able to do our virtual egg hunt, oh my gosh, egg hunt again this year. It starts this Saturday, February the 20th. I'm sorry, it's already started. It started on Saturday, February the 26th. And there's coloring and there's putting the eggs up and there's finding them and pictures and all kinds of different things, including prizes. So we'd encourage everyone to participate. There's more information on our website. And the contest closes on March the 26th at midnight. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Our next item is open forum, and this is the last call for speakers. If you'd like to speak under open forum, please raise your hand by using the raise hand button. Bottom of your screen to comment by phone, press the star key and the number nine. And Jess Wora, are you able to repeat this in Spanish?
I believe so. Can you guys hear me well?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. In a short, we will have the open forum, open forum. Momentarily, the opportunity to sign up will be closed. If you want to give your comments, lift your hand now. To comment by computer, select the participant on the bottom of your screen. And select the option that says raise hand to lift your hand. To comment by telephone or prime star nine. Thank you.
Okay, I'll read the comments that we received by one o'clock, just to give individuals the opportunity to still sign up. We received one comment from Cordell. He really enjoyed the state of the city that the mayor provided at the council meeting on Tuesday, February 23rd. We received 15 comments in opposition of the civic center location of the safe parking program. We received two comments asking the city council to reconsider the development deal that was made last December 2020 to build housing on the Astra Zenica Bay campus site and requesting that the campus bay EIR be reopened on the basis of health and safety reasons. And right now, the the open forum is closed. We have 22 speakers. And I'm going to turn it over to Jess Wora.
Okay, the first 10 speakers are Wayne Green, Phoebe Tanner, Deborah Bayer, Elsa Stevens, phone number ending in 4537, Alyssa Kajar, Hubert, just a second. Hubert Ivory, Torm Non Presert, Ross Harris, Marilyn Langlois. And that's it. I'll start with Wayne Green. Wayne, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start when you're ready.
Good evening, council. My name is Wayne Green. I have been a resident in the north and east for the past 25 years. And I would like to speak in opposition to the plan to put a safe park in the civic center. I'd just like to say that this proposal is naively arrogant at best, or to be charitable, I think it's foolishly optimistic. It's been tried before in other areas and met with, at best, moderate success. And in other places, it's failed miserably, like in Los Angeles and even in San Jose, where right now, as we speak, they are scrambling to dismantle three similar projects that they put together. So why anybody would think that there is something so special or so unique about Richmond that we won't meet with a similar fate is frankly beyond me. The second thing, our councilperson has stated that one of the reasons that the city is racing is because they're trying to secure $260,000 worth of a county grant that has a sunset clause in it if it's not spent. But that turns out to be almost exactly as much money as you guys left on the table when you abandoned the project at Hilltop. So I would just like to say that next election cycle, Richmond voters are going to have a lot longer memories than you think, especially the voters in the north and east. So please do not do this to us. Do not do this to our neighborhood. Do not do this to our children. Do not do this to our community. And frankly, do not do this to yourselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Phoebe Tanner. Phoebe, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start when you're ready.
Okay, I'm Phoebe Tanner, and I'm going to speak to the under the table process in deciding to place the RV safe park at the civic center. Claudia, in your newsletter, you wrote, "Some people will say I should have quietly encouraged my neighbors to organize, to send the homeless somewhere else." You know, your job is not to do anything quietly, not to do anything in secret. Your job is to represent us. That's why we elected you. And that means to alert us to issues that will impact our lives in our district. Gail, you wrote regarding Hilltop, that you changed your vote once you heard from the residents. We want our chance to be heard, and we want our chance to impact the decision. But, and not just be heard, we just, we want to change things. I spent the day today on, yesterday on 26th and Civic Center today on 24th and 25th. And just on 25th, in that area, there's Velma, Castro, John, Sala, Audrey, Leila, Hector, Sharon, Miguel, Anofo. None of them, all from different houses, had heard about the homeless shelters, the RV park, which will be for some of them 100 feet away, 50 feet away, just across the street. You sneak this by us without community input. This is disgraceful.
Thank you. Next, Deborah Bayer. Ready?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Because, I'm sorry, whoever is speaking, your voice is all garbled. But I'll, unless my voice is garbled, I'm going to continue. So hello to everybody. I am calling because in the state of the union, state of the city that Mayor Butt talked about last time, he mentioned two big housing projects that were going forward, and one was the development of Point Mulatto, and the other one is the proposed development at Astra Zenica site. And I'm speaking in opposition to both those sites. I don't think they're anything to be proud of. At Point Mulatto, you have the last remaining continual piece of shoreline from the hill, from a ridgeline down to the bay. And with oak scrub. And the reason the eel grass is so healthy offshore is because there's no development in between the ridge and the bay to create silt and have chemical runoff and everything. And it's a unique ecosystem, and it should be a park. We happen to own it. We own that. That belongs to the people of Richmond. And, and I don't think we should turn it into condos for rich people. And I want to say that both those developments are not going to serve the income level of most residents of Richmond. They're going to be priced over our heads. And of course, the Zenica site is putting housing, that is a privately owned site, but unfortunately has a legacy of superfund-qualified poisons. And I also urge the city to ask if EIR be reopened because it was badly done. It didn't consider the new levels of sea level rise, nor did it consider new standards on volatile organic compounds like TCE. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Elsa Stevens. Elsa, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can start when you're ready. Elsa?
Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just, I didn't, a senior thing, I didn't unmute.
That's okay.
Okay, sorry about that. Elsa Stevens, Richmond voter. Sorry, Elsa Stevens, voter of Richmond. Enough already. Passa ya. The city of Richmond must pass an eviction moratorium. Richmond tenants deserve the same level of protections that Alameda, Berkeley, Oakland, San Francisco already have. The Richmond residents deserve the same level of protection that Alameda, Berkeley, Oakland, and San Francisco currently have. If you're worried about the legality of it, I have a hard time believing that because it is so illegal, what is being attempted at Point Mulatto. And it is so, just insane of what is being done at Astra Zenica. If you're concerned about the legal, what is legal to protect the residents, I don't think so, because what they're doing at Point Mulatto, Astra Zenica, is ridiculous. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you. Next speaker is phone number ending in 4537. Please state your name for the record. You'll have two minutes to speak. Phone number ending in 4537. Okay, I'll come back to that person. Next person to speak is Alyssa Kajar. Alyssa, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start when you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Alyssa, and I am a homeowner in the north and east neighborhood. I learned today that the city council voted to place a homeless RV camp at the 25th and Barrett parking lot, a mere three blocks away from my home. I am adamantly opposed to placing this RV camp here, and I believe that those who live in the neighborhood should have been consulted before this decision was made. There is not a sufficient plan in place to ensure that this is done properly or well. There are concerns related to crime, safety, security, and neighborhood cleanliness. In addition, there are multiple schools and parks within walking distance of this camp location. The camp here will negatively impact the community and access to the Richmond Farmers Market, the Richmond Library, Richmond Art Center, and the auditorium. We should not be blind to the impacts that homelessness has on our communities. Bringing this RV camp to the center of our neighborhood is unacceptable. Claudia, as a member of the sixth district, the district you represent, I urge you to reconsider the vote for RV park at Civic Center. I urge all of you to call to reconsider the vote at Civic Center and to select another location for this RV park that will not impact any Richmond neighborhood negatively. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Hubert Ivory. Hubert, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start when you're ready.
Good, good evening, council members. My name is Reverend Hubert Ivory, and I'm a long-term resident of Richmond and live a few blocks away. And I am very concerned about the homeless problems, and I am sympathetic of needing to find solutions. However, I don't think that this is the best solution. And, and so I'm speaking against this RV parking project. I think that the, that the city center property was granted without notice to the neighborhood. And my understanding is that such projects need to have some type of environmental study or, and I don't see where that was done. I think that this property, using this property, we have a vital impact on the surrounding community. It will affect local parking. There would be additional noise and loss of service to the community. And also your healthcare concerns, especially during this COVID time. I think that the loss of use of the parking lot means that the services provided in the area will either be removed or completely or significantly worsen. The problem of Richmond has limited accessibility to fruit, fresh fruit and grocery, you know, that we are used to getting from the farmer's market. The use of, using the art center will be impacted as well as events in terms of how we deal with excess parking. And also, I think that I haven't seen anything related to how we take care of additional trash and that kind of thing.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Next speaker is Torm Non Presert. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start when you're ready.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Honorable Mayor and City Council, all City Councils. I'm speak to support near the civic center or anywhere in Richmond. It's a, this is temporary transition. So we very have to open our heart to those people who in need, who's in the community as humanity, and we need to figure out long-term solution, but also at the meantime, what are we gonna do to support those people who, on housing. So it's very interesting that when we look into, well, each, each of the neighborhood, nobody wanted. Then what we're gonna do for those people who need. I think we really need, have to open our heart and our hand to those people who need it. And all of those concern, I think that the city would need to, to travel plan in term of all of those different concern, but I think it's the humanity, human need. And, and I have a lot of relatives who live around the neighborhood. I call a lot of people. And I don't have anyone who said objection on it. And they all said like, if we can help other people, they will be happy to see. But I think in a detailed work plan, it needs to have how we're gonna manage the site. I think it's something that the city needs to represent to the staff and then through people who can operate and who can oversee the program. And all, all the problem is a problem, but it's, we always have to look into the solution instead of look at, for the problem. If you look at solution, you'll find solution. So I'm urge the city council to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ross Harris. Ross, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start when you're ready.
Hi, City Council. My name is Ross Harris. I'm calling in opposition to the safe parking site at Civic Center. I think it would be wise of City Council to consider proximity to homes. And I think that they will gain a huge amount more support for this if they think about how close this proposed site will be to homes. I think that it could go into a neighborhood that is, or it could go into a more industrial area, and I think that could work reasonably well. I think the Civic Center has a lot of unaddressed issues already. And what maybe concerns me the most is that there's no real exit strategy. And yeah, parking is already difficult in the neighborhood. This is definitely going to add to that. Yeah. In addition, beyond that, I think that we need to get street sweeping back to normal. And I'm also against the development in Point Mulatto. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Next speaker is Marilyn Langlois. Marilyn, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. My name is Marilyn Langlois. I am a 17-year resident of the north and east neighborhood in Richmond. And I'm speaking in support of the safe parking at the Civic Center. As a previous speaker said, I think we do need to look into our hearts and recognize that, you know, there are people among us who are homeless and have, you know, no other place to sleep other than in their vehicles or RVs. And we need to find a place for them. I think Civic Center will be fine. It will have support services. I think I'm confident that the staff can address any challenges that arise. And I think it's, it's not a good idea to equate homeless people with crime. There's really no correlation there. I myself live just a few blocks from Civic Center. I don't have a problem with this. I want us to give, I want us to give it a good try. I actually had, several years ago, there was a homeless person living in a small RV in the driveway of my neighbor right across the street for a number of years. And he minded his own business, didn't cause any problems. And, you know, I was just glad he had someplace to go inside and not have to sleep out on the sidewalk or the street. So again, I, I thank the city council for taking this bold move. And I'm committed to do what I can to help make it work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the following 10 speakers will be Jack Ham, phone number ending in 6261, Marina Melara, Frances Clay, Veronica Hernandez, Jay Romer, Tarnell Abbott, Naomi Williams, Marisol Cantu, and Jan Minion. We'll start with Jack Ham. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start when you're ready.
Thank you very much. Jack Ham, District 6. First, I'd like to draw attention to the council regarding the procedural error on the February 23rd agenda. You'll recall, under the Brown Act, there's a requirement to provide sufficient context for public comment, specifically looking at item I3. It was not considering Civic Center as a location for the safe parking program. As a result, I'm in objection from principle of post facto information provided to the community and the lack of involvement of the community in the decision-making. I empathize with the other speakers who are supportive of the general goal of the program. I am too, and generally supportive of the program. However, there's a few other major items which I feel council has not addressed. Amongst others, there are requirements for an environmental impact report under CEQA. And I would also note that the drains in the parking area near there drain directly to the ocean per the note on top of them, indicating a potential implication of the Clean Water Act. Further, the, the overall design of the, of the program to house the 25 RVs, I think has failed to consider some of the risks associated with the location. Your call under Ninth District. If for some reason council fails to secure additional funding at the end of the year, there will be no method or remediation to remove anybody living on the property from the property. This is something that would not have happened if we had leveraged the private property at Hilltop. Further, I do not think council, nor any of the program operators have provided sufficient evidence of how they will control adjacent overflow, should there be additional cars moving into the area or tents coming up on the street. So I do encourage council to reconsider how they're doing this and come back with a more viable plan.
Thank you. Next speaker is phone number ending in 6261. Please state your name for the record. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start. Phone number ending in 6261. You can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Edith Pastrana, Richmond resident. And I want to touch on two things because I've been hearing about the safe parking lot. I am for the, for the idea of having this. I do hear people, you know, having concerns or whatever. But I think that not everyone has that privilege to be housed right now, and people are doing what they can. And this is an effort that, you know, people are trying to, to, to come up with to put somewhat of a Band-Aid on the issue because there's so many, there's so many people who are becoming homeless as we speak. And so I originally wanted to ask that the city pass a eviction moratorium since Richmond is one of the highest indicators of eviction cases in the Bay Area. Our moratorium is not as strong as Oakland or Berkeley's. Heard some other cities too. So this is something that we definitely need to work on. And I think that people need to really see the solutions, like the man said earlier. If we can look to that and try to find solutions, then we, we can work together on that. But trying to push the issue around is not going to work, and it hasn't worked. Because I know a lot of people who didn't have a place to stay actually went and parked at the civic lot right there even before all of this, because they had nowhere else to go, and they thought that was the safest place to be. So regardless whether or not, people are trying to figure out what they need to do. And the, the best way to do it is managing it. But yeah, I do ask that the city do pass a moratorium on evictions because we're going to see a whole lot more people who are homeless. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Marina Melara. Marina, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start when you're ready.
Hi, my name is Marina Melara, and I live on 24th, two blocks away from the sitting parking lot. So I, I oppose the RV parking lot idea. Part is just because I'm concerned how it's gonna be actually maintained, um, the regulations or the process involved, just because Richmond has so many, um, you know, challenges, and so there's just another challenge. And so I'm concerned that we won't be able to handle the situation. Um, one thing I'm thinking of is um what happens when the parking lot gets full? So are we gonna have cars along our streets um leading up to Civic, you know, City Hall? So that's my concern, since we uh, you know, have children, that we walk up and down the street all the time. Um, and then, um, sorry. And then my other concern is that what if our other cities around us, like El Cerrito, um, who's, they also have homeless um communities, like what if they are sent our way? We just cannot handle the amount of um people that are sent our way. And then just do wanna add, like I do empathize with those who are struggling at the moment. So if it does move forward, I just really ask that we are really involved as a community to figure out what the process is, what the exit plan will be. Um, and just really know what's happening and not just be told two seconds before it happens. Um, we should really be on top of it. Um, this, you know, everyone in our community is very concerned. Um, and we do wanna help, but we wanna make sure that it's, it's um done correctly. So yeah, that's it.
Yeah. Next speaker is Frances Clay. Frances, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start when you're ready. Frances Clay. I'll move on to the next speaker, or I'll try Frances. I will move on to Veronica Hernandez. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start when you're ready. Veronica.
The. Hello?
Yes, you can go ahead and start. You'll have two minutes to speak.
Okay. Hola, mi nombre es Veronica Hernandez. Soy residente de Richmond. Necesitamos por favor que nos apoyen. paren los desalojos en Richmond. La ley estatal no tiene suficiente protección. Siguen los desalojos en Richmond y tiene uno de los índices más altos de desalojo desde que empezó la pandemia. Nosotros los inquilinos de Richmond ahorita estamos sin protección, sin un moro, sin, sin un oratorio. Los inquilinos en Richmond somos vulnerables a ser desalojados. Los desalojos están conectados a los casos de COVID. Las razones son sin trabajo, enfermos. Tengan compasión de las familias que están en las, nosotros estamos en sus manos. Pedimos por favor que consideren esto. El Condado de Alameda tiene protección para los inquilinos. Ah, con todo mi corazón pido por favor que tengamos una ciudad saludable donde no tengamos que vivir en las calles con nuestros hijos. En sus manos está que nos apoyen con todo mi corazón. Espero y consideren a nos, a nosotros los inquilinos de Richmond. Gracias.
Gracias. Our next speaker is Jay Romer. Jay Romer?
Yeah. My name is Julie Romer. I've lived at twenty-six oh two Roosevelt Avenue for twenty years. I oppose the designation of the Civic Center parking lot as a safe park. Last week, the council reversed its vote on Hilltop as a site for the safe park and rushed through approval of Civic Center without a single apparent concern about involving the extremely adjacent North and East Community. We are angry. This site is simply too densely embedded in the area to be suitable for this project. The proximity of the neighborhoods, of the church, the temple, the funeral parlor, the art center, the library, the use of the parking lot by city workers, art center students, and the longstanding use by the Richmond Farmers Market. Also, just two blocks away stands the new and very large affordable housing complex. The city and all residents of this central area can be certain that traffic and circulation will become even more dense when these buildings are inhabited. In addition, there is legal uncertainty about whether the city can require the RVs to move from publicly owned land at the end of the alleged pilot period. These and many other specific issues that others have mentioned must be resolved. The council must reconsider this decision, dealing with its extreme complexity.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tarnell Abbott.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I, um, I remain distressed that um Point Malati, which is publicly owned land, has been sold off or is being sold off or promised for a, a high-end housing development. I remain distressed that the Zenica site, Astra Zenica owns it, it's also known as Campus Bay, is uh being um slated to be a housing development. And um here we have a city which desperately needs housing that people can afford. We have Hilltop, and maybe that would be a more appropriate site for a mega housing development. Uh, and maybe it could even have low-income housing, you know, real low-income affordable housing that people can really afford to live in. As this um horrible pandemic um continues to be uh upon us, I, it seems to me it's very likely we will have more homeless and more people out of work. Although I have to say, when I visited some homeless people who were parked over by the Zenica site, and I was warning them actually about the danger of being near there, most of the people I talked to had jobs. Uh, they were living there in their RVs and they, they were working, people who could not afford rents and um but we do have homeless people and we do need to deal with it. I worked uh for many years at Civic Center and if things are not normal now, I don't think they'll be back to normal in a year. This is a temporary thing. I do support it. I think that um it would have been better to go with the fire training center. And I wish that that could be reconsidered, but I guess the time is up for that. So just please take care of people. We're all about a one-page away.
Time is expired. Our next speaker is Naomi Williams.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Naomi, you can start.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for voting on the site of the Civic Center. I agree with Marilyn Langlois and the others who also said Civic Center is the best place for the safe parking program because out of sight is out of mind. And if the council men, if the council members have to look at it every day, they would take more caution to try to get a, a permanent spot for the RVs. And that would mean it's in sight and in mind. I would think that maybe if they would decide to change anything, it'll be changing why they wanna change again because they have a few people that's really not impacted about anything, but wanna move it to neighborhoods that are impacted. The best place for it would be Point Malati. There's no houses there now. And until they get built, then they could stay there since it's only gonna be for a year. So thank you for listening to me. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next speaker is Marisol Cantu. Marisol, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, this is Marisol Cantu. I am a Richmond native and I live in District Six. I am calling to applaud City Council member Claudia Jimenez for taking ownership and agreeing and voting yes on the safe parking program. Now I would like to speak to the District Six residents who have been calling in opposition. I would like you to really dig deep and look at this campaign of not in my backyard. It is racist and it is classist. All of your arguments are simply moot points because schools are closed, the library is closed. The COVID parking site can be moved. The farmers market is a great place where we can have our unhoused community members and families go to get fruits and vegetables. But my question to the residents that are opposing this, why are you opposing a neighbor, a family, a child, a woman from getting access to clean water, security, shelter, food, assistance? I would like them to reconsider opposing this simply because of their nimbyism and the fact that they don't want to see an eyesore. This is not an eyesore. This is a crisis that we are all living in. And we need to understand and help our neighbors as human beings, and they have the decency to be in a secure place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jan Minyon. Jan, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Jan Minyoni. Um, I'm a born and bred resident of Richmond, and I'm the president of the North and East Neighborhood Council. Um, the location where you are planning to put the Safe Park Pilot Program is in my neighborhood. Um, I have said um to people in the uh, that are working on the homeless task force that I felt this was a good location, and my reasoning was very simply, if it's there, you guys will take care of it. I think what many of my residents and um neighbors are upset about is that no one talked to them, no one let us know anything of what was going on. I knew somewhat because I knew about the um, uh, the issue with Hilltop and that they were gonna fight it. And so there had to be someplace else for it to go. Um, couple of things. Um, I think it's very important that every resident or every resident that wants to be involved, has a right to be involved with how um, this whole thing is done, set up, planned, and if we see issues, we can tell you about them. Um, on Monday, March eighth, at the RNCC meeting at Monday at seven o'clock, I will have people from the um, that will be running the park. I'll have John Joya's office. I will have Claudia and a few other people will be there to explain this to us and understand that we do need to have a large input in what goes on in this location. Um, for the fact we wanna maintain that we still have a library and an art center and a farmers market and all of those things, and know that it's safe for the residents that are living there and the safe for the residents around there. Make sure they have fresh water, showers, um, all the things that they will need to survive. And if you have any questions, you know where to find me. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last six speakers are David Nasler, Yanni Garcia, Tabeli Pacheco, Marlene Alcala, Dana Pulido, David Sharples, and username Newboy. I'll start with David Nasler. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start when you're ready.
Hello, my name is David Nasler, District Six. Um, yeah, in response to nimbyism, one can look past, uh, one can look to past pilot projects in the Bay Area to see that these communities are not the bastion of security for women and minors as some would like to believe. In fact, there was a solid, if there was a solid model for this, uh, perhaps City Council would have come forward with these plans in advance and had a much easier time funding them. In all my prior experiences as a city commissioner and in the placement of many public works, I've never seen such an intensively community-facing project summarily approved by a city council with no prior solicitation of public input from the primary stakeholders. As we have heard from earlier speakers, our neighbors have ample compassion for the houseless. But if this was properly, a properly vetted concept, there would have been public input from the primary stakeholder who are the many hundreds of households in the immediate vicinity of the project. This incredible outcry I have heard from my neighbors and generation of ill will was completely avoidable. Not just the first time this strategy uh was used at the Hilltop community, but now again here. City Council's cause is noble but not adequate to dispel the blowback. And unfortunately, we can see no insight taken by City Council from the experience at Hilltop as they continue in their hasty rush to take advantage of a paltry two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant. This short-term opportunism is very short-sighted and impulsive example of policymaking far beneath the true needs of the homeless population and far beneath the potential that City Council seats can realize. The current City Council is instead demonstrating to constituents as not up to the very considerable task of solving homelessness with a true community mandate, stymying honest progress. Please prove to us, please, please prove us all wrong. Reconsider this vote and come back to your constituents with a real plan in advance so you can get real money. Perhaps hopefully through another uh city bond. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Yanni Garcia. Yanni, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, good evening. My name is Yanni Garcia. I'm a District Six uh resident for more than thirty years. I wanna first, this is really close to my heart. I think a lot of our neighbors, specifically in my district right now, and I think just in general, there's a stereotype of who and what homeless look like. And we're not dirty. We are just people that fell to rough times. In twenty nineteen, I became homeless with my family and my two girls. And had it not been for the support of a lot of the community members that are here listening that know what we went through, I would have been still houseless and still homeless. But I'm not dirty. I am not a drug addict. I am not what everyone thinks that the people that are living in that community are. We are not like that. There is a stereotype that needs to be taken away from people that are struggling to make ends meet. So I definitely support the safe parking program. Now, one of the things that we're forgetting is if we don't use these funds by June, we're gonna lose everything. So it's, I understand and I actually agree that there should have been a lot of community input. I am all for being involved and participating in this, but we don't have time for that right now. What we can do is move forward with this and make sure that every single resident that is interested, not just right now because it's famous and it's something to talk about on social media, but it's actually for the community and for the community, gets involved. I love that Jen is here because I know that she's gonna make sure that we, as our District Six, we get our needs met, we provide for our unhoused families, children, women, families that are struggling, and I know that we can make it happen. This is not gonna stay in our district forever. This is a pilot program. This is a year. A year has gone by really fast in this pandemic, so we need to make this happen for those folks.
Time has expired. Thank you. Next speaker is Tabeli Pacheco. Tabeli, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Uh, hi, um, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Sibeli and uh I'm a District Six uh uh resident and I, I'm calling to uh in support of the, the program. Um, I believe that um the housing crisis got so much worse in the past few months. Um, it's something, it's something we can see every day um happening right here on our backyard. And I think if we don't do something right now, this is gonna get really out of hand. And I totally support and I, and I, I wanna get more involved and I wanna help whatever it needs. But um, it's, it's, it's not only for, for this crisis, but it's a matter of uh humanity. We just need to look uh at our neighbors and, and help them out in this time of need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Marlene Alcala. Marlene, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can start when you're ready.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marlene Alcala. I'm a proud Richmond resident.
I'm a proud Richmond resident and I would like to start off by asking you all a question. Who set the city priorities for the safe parking program? Which, by the way, for everyone who keeps talking about families as being part of this program, I believe it is only for singles and couples. As far as I can tell, there was no real effort made at communicating the program to city residents. How and when was public outreach undertaken by our representatives to allow for a valid public commentary period? Let's discuss site location. Within a half-mile radius of Civic Center, the site you all selected, there are ten children's sites, which includes schools. And for the person who said that schools will not be open, per superintendent, they will be open this fall. The library, parks and recreation, arts, and children's mental health services. Why wasn't proximity to children a disqualifying factor when choosing the safe parking site? Many of us actually support a solution to address this very important crisis. But anyone with a modicum of intelligence would have recognized that the complex issues that accompany homelessness, issues such as sanitation challenges, hazardous materials, drugs, even violence, Norvia homeless woman was killed on the Greenway just this past year, are not issues that you willingly place in the vicinity of children. Even with attempts at mitigation, you do not willingly put children in the vicinity of those kinds of issues. Poor planning, neglectful planning has been driving this program. But why? Is it because you all have no real authentic investment in creating a robust and sustainable solution to the current homeless crisis in our city? Is it because our most vulnerable, the children of this city, are not a priority for you? It is time for you to immediately pause the implementation of this program and put into place an inquiry-guided process that puts public input as one of its central tenants. But most importantly, one that places the well-being of Richmond's children as its main priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tanya Pulido. Tanya, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can start when you're ready.
Good, good evening, city council and community. My name is Tanya Pulido. I'm a Richmond resident. I live close to Barrett and Twenty Third, and I've lived here my whole life. And I am calling in support of the safe parking program at the Civic Center. The city has the funds to manage the site and there's gonna be an operator at the site. And it's only a one-year pilot program. And the city also did a lot of research on different models and they visited different sites. And there's also a limit on how many RVs and cars can be at the site. And I really, I strongly believe that if the city and the community and the service providers work together, this program will work. You know, we are in a housing crisis and we must implement both temporary and permanent solutions in the short term and long term. I agree that, you know, it's not an ideal site. It doesn't fit as many vehicles as we would like. It doesn't, and it's not, it's a bandage, you know, to the solution, to the problem. But the, the reality is that we're in a housing crisis and we need to do something today. This, the city has been working on this for two years. And if people are more interested in participating, I like strongly recommend that they attend the Homeless Task Force meetings that are public and have been talking about this program for a very long time. I'm just very empathetic to our unhoused neighbors in Richmond. They're suffering and they need help from the community and from the city staff. And so I applaud the city council members who are acting to provide a safe place to park because as mentioned, someone was killed on the Greenway and, and many people are just looking for a safe place with services, with clean water. And a place where they can go to sleep with no fear. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is David Sharples. David, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can start when you're ready.
Good evening, city council. My name's David Sharples. I'm a resident of North and East and I support the safe parking program. We're in a housing crisis and folks who are unhoused need a safe place to park. So I support that program. We also need to pass a moratorium on evictions. Without an eviction moratorium, Richmond tenants are vulnerable to being evicted during the pandemic. State law does not have enough protections, which is why tenants in Richmond continue to be evicted throughout the pandemic. Cities in the Bay Area with real eviction moratoriums have had a much lower eviction rate during the pandemic than Richmond. And Richmond has had one of the higher eviction rates in the Bay, in the Bay Area during the pandemic. Richmond tenants are currently unprotected from eviction for nearly all causes for eviction during the pandemic. This leaves tenants vulnerable to displacement out of Richmond and/or homelessness and is a public health risk. Evictions are tied to COVID-19 cases. No one can shelter in place if they don't have a home. And families who are displaced are often forced into overcrowded conditions. I urge you to pass a strong moratorium on evictions. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker is by the username New Boy. Please state your name for the record. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can start when you're ready.
Hi, this is Hello, this is Samir Mano. I'm a resident next Civic Center. I go against the decision that Meyer and the counselor for putting the homeless next to our doors because it's kind of a foggy plan. Nobody asked us, nobody tell us anything about it until the day they make that decision. So we go against it because we have many concerns for our safety, our families. And we didn't know if it's gonna be a homeless, a family homeless, just or for singles or, and couples. And we think there is other places on the city they can, you can like move them there or have another plan. That's, that's what I said. Thank you.
Thank you. And there are no more public speakers.
That was our last public speaker.
Okay, let's go to the next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item is approval of the consent calendar.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Who made the motion?
Willis.
That's what I thought. Okay, second.
Johnson.
Second by Johnson. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Bates.
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Sorry, yes.
And Mayor Butt.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous. Next on the agenda. Under Budget Session is Item H1. If you would like to address the council on this item, please raise your hand by selecting the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your screen. To comment by phone, press the star and the number nine key. And just while we repeat this, these instructions in Spanish. Item H1 is to receive a presentation and adopt budget guide, guiding principles. Looks like we have seven hands raised.
Good evening, Mayor Butt and councilmembers. My name is LaShonda White. I am the deputy city manager here in the city of Richmond. Tonight, I have with me Steve Toler from Management Partners and you will hear from him in a moment. But in November of 2020, the city retained Management Partners to review the current and future budget situation. And through analysis of budget documents, as well as discussions with key staff, union representatives and council members, Management Partners will provide the city council with options to help achieve a structurally balanced budget and long-term fiscal sustainability. As a first step in achieving fiscal sustainability and as a key component in the annual budget development process, a set of budget principles has been compiled for council consideration. In a moment, you will receive a presentation from Steve Toler about their work thus far and the possible budget principles. Before you hear from Mr. Toler, I would like to share that in the upcoming weeks, Management Partners will return to city council to provide options of items to consider for a fiscal sustainability plan, including specific budget strategies and incorporate use of real-time dashboard tools, which will be really interesting for council and the community to see. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Toler.
Great. Thanks, LaShonda. And I, I would like to introduce Andy Belnap. Andy, I believe you're here and I'm feel, there we go. Andy is our senior vice president of our firm. Andy's gonna lead off our conversation tonight with you. And so I'd like to turn it over to Andy.
Are you gonna put the PowerPoint up, Steve?
There we go.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Good evening. Steve and I are gonna go through our fiscal sustainability project and the, not one by one, but the rationale behind the guiding budget principles. Could we have the next slide? So just to introduce you to Management Partners, we're a full-service consulting firm to local governments. We have worked, we, we, we've been providing services for twenty-six years. We have worked for probably the majority of the larger cities in California. And we provide a variety of services, including long-term fiscal modeling and development of strategies for, for budgeting. Next slide. So tonight, we wanna talk about how we approach planning for fiscal sustainability and talk about the budget principles that, that have been developed cooperatively by, by us, looking to other cities and what they've adopted. And also the city, city management staff, next steps, and then go over next steps. So our engagement with the city is to review the current fiscal model, which was prepared some years ago. We have done that. We are in the process of updating some draft modeling that we've done, working with city management to get that right before we present it to the council. This is gonna include a dashboard, but the real importance of the dashboard is the ability to make real-time changes in assumptions and strategies. So you can see if you do X, the result is Y. And we, we believe it's a, our modeling work is anchored in realistic assumptions about the real world that cities exist in. So our modeling assumes that your, your operating costs are gonna increase because you have got to offer competitive wages and so forth. And that's all included in our modeling. And a later date, we'll go over that with you and answer your questions. And then the last part of our work is to work with the city to develop a fiscal sustainability plan. And we'll talk a little bit more about what fiscal sustainability means later in this presentation. Next slide. Oh, here we go. We need to skip this one, Steve. So when it comes to fiscal sustainability planning, our primary objective is to preserve, to preserve local government services. So we always look at this as the last, the last option is to look at service reductions, which means in, in, in a practical way, service reductions means reduction in employees and reduction in services to the public. So that's the last place we wanna go. Before we go there, we wanna look at all the ways that we can squeeze more efficiency and effectiveness out of the services that we deliver. And how can we develop more revenues to support the maintenance of service levels? And so that's sort of our orientation. And next slide, Steve. So the way we practice this, and by the way, we've been working with dozens of California cities on, on these steps over the last probably about a decade that we've been actively involved in this field. And these are the steps that we typically follow is that we, we first wanna have a solid, long-range fiscal forecast. And we're just about there for Richmond. We're, we're finishing that up. Then we wanna identify strategies to solve whatever issues that we find with that fiscal model. And those strategies can be, as I mentioned, anything from changing the mix of services or developing additional revenues. All kinds of strategies typically in a project like this will have at least two dozen discreet strategies to talk to you about. The next is to communicate and talk to stakeholders within the city. That includes the, the, obviously the city council, but also other stakeholders like collective bargaining organizations and the community groups that are active. And basically find out what's gonna be feasible. And then the last thing is to help the council select the best approach for your, your unique city. Next slide. So these are, these are again, this is a little bit, a little bit of a repeat, but these are some of the strategy types that we look at. Obviously, our main, our main focus is sort of how do we protect the, the sustainability of the general fund? And so we look at this through a prism that is focused on the general fund. But we look at expenditure controls and cost shifts, changes in service delivery, revenue enhancements, and then as a last resort, service level reductions. And, you know, how do you do those service level reductions if need be in a planned and organized way? Next slide, Steve. So sometimes we get bogged down a little bit in what, you know, fiscal sustainability is the term we use because the vast majority of the local governments we look at are looking at how do they maintain their sustainability? So it's more of a long-term focus. We, as I mentioned, we prioritize services. We look obviously at how do we enhance revenues? That's, that's, that's a big focus. We look at reserves and maintaining reserves at a safe level because you can't run your reserves down to a very low level or, or you're very subject to variability that can occur with those revenue sources. And then we look at other ways to reduce costs. It's a very different fiscal solvency is a different kind of thing. It's more of a cash flow-focused analysis, very short-term, more about liquidity. Sometimes we look at this, but that's not what we're doing here. We're looking more at the fiscal sustainability platform. Next slide. And so here's the path forward. We, we wanna make sure that, that cash balances are sufficient. We then look at all the different ways that we can look at meeting your obligations. We proactively look at what we can do to support the general fund because we don't wanna get into any, any, anywhere near insolvency or solvency issues. We wanna stay way away from that. And Richmond is a city that has ample reserves and has time. And then we develop a strategic plan, not a, not a ad hoc plan, a crisis-driven plan, but a strategic plan to take us to sustainability. And budget, I guess I should say here is budget principles help us do that because then you tell us what your principles are and we develop strategies within those principles. That's why the principles are so helpful. Next slide, Steve. And Steve's going to talk a little bit about those actual budget principles. Steve?
Great. Thanks, Andy. Good evening, everyone. It's good to meet you all. You've had an opportunity in some cases, counsel, to talk with some of our colleagues. And so we're looking forward to working with you through this endeavor. And one of the things that Andy had indicated that we have seen being a best practice with other agencies is this concept of of budget principles. And really, you know, what are budget principles and how are they manifested in terms of not only preparing for the annual or biennial budget process, depending on the agency, but also how does it tie into fiscal sustainability work? You know, the concept of budget principles really is a best practice. It's used by several organizations. And you know, many, a few years ago, actually, through the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, there was also a National Advisory Council on local and state budgeting. They got together a whole group of constituents ranging from local government leaders, elected officials, practitioners, finance experts, economists, labor groups, labor representatives, academia, a whole bunch of different folks to come around and say, what are the really best practices in terms of of budgeting? And you know, really three things came out of that, you know, big issues were, you know, successful budgeting really incorporates a long term perspective that focuses on the long term and identifies then what are the action steps through the budget from an annual perspective in terms of how do we achieve that that long term vision? It also establishes linkages to broad organizational goals that are really important. And so it really is vested in the priorities that you have as the city council and the vision that you have for the community. But then it also focuses on really those, you know, budget decisions and the results and outcomes that are needed. And the budget principles or the policies that feed those principles are really a best practice in helping to really identify the consistent application of those long term visions and goals that you have in terms of creating the budget. And so it helps clarify the expectations and not only developing, but also evaluating a proposed budget that will be coming to you in the next month or two. You know, so it helps to guide staff in terms of preparing budget proposals for council's consideration. It helps, you know, it helps understand then what council's expectations are in terms of your consideration of those proposals. It also gives the community an expectation level in terms of what are the expected goals that the budget is really trying to solve. And so the budget principles that have been established, that have been presented in your packet for your consideration tonight really are, again, based on best practices of what other agencies use that seem to have a lot of great relevance for the city of Richmond. And they really kind of revolve around these eight different categories. What I thought I'd do is just kind of cover high level in terms of what these categories are covering. There were 25 principles that were indicated in your handout. And we can respond to any questions that you might have about any of those principles and what they mean. But let me try to go through them and give broad brushstrokes in terms of what each of these principles are trying to do. And so the first area is really this area of, you know, of budgeting policies. And these are really trying to establish a long term financial plan. And that's seeing the budget as part of a long term financial plan that really, you know, is amended or only looks at potential adjustments that are needed in the future or throughout the year, where there's a sense of urgency, where there's some significant new priorities that you identify as as you walk through a year after the budget has been, has been adopted. The second area really is reserve policies. And several of you are aware of this, the city already has some reserve policies. And the general fund right now, the minimum reserve policy is 15% of annual operating expenditures. The, the suggested policies or principles that are ahead of you tonight would round that to really be more about two months or pretty darn close to 17% of annual operating expenditures. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends that as a minimum for general funds for local agencies. A lot of it is based on what the volatility is of the underlying revenue sources that you have. And the more volatile those revenue sources are, the more reserve levels would be prudent to ensure that you can weather the storm of the elasticity or the up and down of economic downturns. Not unlike the witch of what we've seen with the COVID pandemic. So anyway, so, so the policies here could also be reflective of the 15% that you have. But there were some exceptions that are in here for your consideration. One would be in your wastewater funds in terms of setting a minimum of 50%. The reason why that would need to be a little bit higher is the lumpiness of the collections that you have in terms of wastewater revenues that occur during the year to ensure that you have the reserves and the cash flow that are necessary, as well as a an emergency reserve for any capital cost or you know, infrastructure that needs to be repaired on an emergency basis. There are also a couple of other exceptions to the, the two month policy level in terms of risk management. You need to make sure that you have enough to cover your self insurance indemnity as well as equipment replacement funds that you already have. The third area is in the area of ongoing resources and operations. And the concept here is really that ongoing expenditures should be supported by ongoing revenues. And that gives much more a sense of assuredness to your employees that provide services to the community, that there is an ongoing revenue stream that will help support that. It gives assurance to the community that, that the services that you are providing have some assurance of being able to continue. As Andy said, you know, the focus is really on trying to maintain service levels and if not, enhance them. And so you need to have, you know, an ongoing revenue source to be able to do that. And that's really what this area attempts to, to address. It also addresses issues such as what are the cost recovery levels that you're expecting to achieve? It's very clear that in the area of recreation services, for example, or facilities use, a lot of times those are not necessarily assuming to get full cost recovery. But when it comes to development services and those that are going to be developing property, there's more of a concept of wanting to achieve full cost recovery. So those principles incorporate those types of concepts that ensure that ongoing revenues are available to pay for the ongoing cost of providing services. The other side of that is what about one time revenues, one time resources that may come around? And the principles here that many government agencies use as a best practice is really to look at those one time revenue sources as either a bridge that helps get us through a difficult time, not unlike what is being proposed right now at the federal level with the the American Rescue Plan Act. And also previous to that, the CARES Act, which provided some local funding for local agencies, those one time revenue sources that are attempting to help offset, you know, revenue losses and bridge a gap where it has potentially had an impact on your, not only your revenues, but also then your reserves. But the concept here with, with one time revenues is to really dedicate them for one time expenses to not make a commitment that this one time revenue source will be used in perpetuity. And when it's exhausted, what do you do with those costs that you are now incurring? And so that's what the concept is of this one time revenues. And I want to be clear that, you know, building permits, development, planning, you know, revenues, things that you see from, you know, maybe some larger projects perhaps. That's all considered part of your ongoing revenues because those come and go. The property transfer tax is something that's an ongoing revenue source. But something like a one time, you know, settlement from a lawsuit or something like this, this, you know, ARPA funds that potentially could be coming from the federal stimulus package are more those types of resources that are considered on time. Four other areas I want to just then cover briefly. The concept of capital projects is that as the city looks to invest in capital infrastructure, that it will be informed by not only a long term capital improvement plan, but also understanding what are the costs of not only operating, but maintaining those facilities in the long term. And so that's what that area is attempting to address. Fiscal sustainability planning, the efforts that you have all kind of moved forward with. And the reason that we're in front of you tonight is that the principles would suggest that if as you look at a fiscal, as you look at the long range forecast, and if the forecast identifies that there is a gap between ongoing revenues and ongoing expenditures, that the principles would be established in such a way that based on the priorities that you have for the organization and the community, that that would be resolved over a 10 year period. Trying to maintain your reserve levels over the course of that 10 year period at your minimum reserve levels. And that ultimately service level reductions are really a last resort. And so that's what that area is. Two other areas. One is in the area of debt management. I think along this lines of as an individual of that, you know, I'll put things on a credit card as I need to, but as long as I pay that off, it's okay. But once you start paying for your ongoing expenses with a credit card, when are you going to be able to pay that back? And do you get yourself into a debt management crisis where you have to already put food on the table, but pay for all those expenses that you've incurred? And that's the concept here of debt management really is that that the concept of, of short midterm or long term borrowing is really not intended to be used for ongoing operations, but rather in terms of, you know, that looking for mostly with respect to infrastructure needs, other one time, you know, significant costs that you may have, where you have a potential revenue stream in the future to take care of that. Some people raise the question, well, what about pension obligation bonds? Well, pension obligation bonds are really funded as a result of an unfunded liability that an agency has with respect to perhaps either retiree medical costs, or in this case, really retiree costs related to pension obligations. That's a refinancing of that debt that has already been incurred. And so that would not necessarily preclude the city the way this principle is of being able to issue pension obligation bonds like you already have and that you're paying down. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then there's a couple of other matters in there and you know, is that enterprise funds will reflect the true cost of operations. And that's something that pretty much you are already doing. As well as then the concept of development, that development should pay its fair share of capital improvement costs. So that's an overview of the principles that were included in your packet and based on our experience and working with other local agencies of what may be helpful as you, as you move forward. And what I'd like to do then, before we turn it back over to questions perhaps is just maybe toss it back to Andy to give you some preview of what some of our next steps are in our, in our project. And then we can help you address any questions you have on those principles. Andy?
Thanks, Steve. Our next steps are really, it's important for us to hear from the city council about the principles because as we both mentioned, we want to develop strategies that are within the envelope of those principles. And we are now we're developing strategies now as we finalize our fiscal model. And we'll come back to you with some suggestions as to the the best strategies that would fit for Richmond, ranging from where are revenue enhancements possible to other changes to service delivery. But it's very helpful to, for us to be able to work within that envelope that the city council helps us helps us define with the understanding that there's that we're, that the situation is one in which there's, there's not a lot of easy answers. We've been we've been working in sort of cutback mode even since the great recession. So we certainly recognize that Richmond and pretty much all the cities we work with have made cutbacks. So we, we understand that there's not a lot of low hanging fruit out there anymore. But having your perspective does really help us develop viable strategies. So with that, Steve, I think I'll turn it over back to Laura or LaShonda. And we'll be happy to, to answer any questions, but we're also very happy to hear your perspective on the principles that best serve Richmond.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Andy, so much. As they both mentioned, this we're bringing forth possible budget strategies for council consideration and discussion. If council approves them, they can be adopted tonight. If there are any changes, we will be listening and taking that information from council.
Are there questions or comments from council members? I see Councilmember Martinez. I'll start off with you.
Okay. Actually, these don't read like principles. They read like policies. So could you translate these policies into what would be a principle?
Looking to see, Andy, you want to go?
Well, I think could you perhaps elaborate a little bit on that, just so we can understand? But we, we think of these as, as I guess both principles and policies, but their direction from the elected leadership that we would like to that we would like to incorporate.
Well, like I said, they're, they're policies and, and principles. For instance, a budget reflects the principles of of the policymakers. So, so if our principles are to provide quality services to our constituents, then our budget needs to reflect that. And so, and so this seems to be a budget. It seems to be budget principles that basically take the purse strings away from city council and gives it over to the city manager. So I see, as I've said before, I see the city government as the city manager and staff being the executive, the city council being the legislative, and the legislative has the purse strings. And the city attorney being the judicial. So in order to these policies seem to be giving legislative power over to the executive branch. So that the executive branch can make executive orders.
And I'll, perhaps I'll speak to that. That was clearly not the intent of these principles. The, and policies, Councilmember Martinez, if you'd like to refer to them as that. This is not intended to delegate, you know, a significant amount of authority. There are some things, for example, some administrative things that perhaps that is included in there. I think policy number three or principle number three is that speaks to the city manager being able to move and transfer funds necessarily. If the council decides it doesn't want to do that, then that's fine. But again, it would not be able to span fund level. But everything else that's within these principles are not intended to delegate authority to the city manager unless you specifically are wanting to do that. There are operational things that the city manager and the staff need to to take care of. But clearly, most of these principles really come from a policy direction from the council in terms of, you know, reserve levels, in terms of how you are expecting debt and how you're expecting capital infrastructure to be, to be implemented. So that, that was the intent. It wasn't to change authority or, or, you know, unnecessarily delegate policy level authority where it's not warranted. Um, where it's not warranted.
Just to really emphasize that point that again, it truly is not the intent in any way at all. So if there's some specific, if there's some specific ones of these that um, how, that, that helped you like created that feeling. Um, we'd be happy to take a look at them and modify them so, so that it's more clear that that isn't the intent.
Well, well, these um, the, the, these policies uh, how did these principles uh, basically um, work hand in hand with one another, and I think all of them would need to be reconsidered together.
Can you, can you share your definite, well, I mean, we, it, council's pleasure, we can call, the, the naming of them i- is something that's easily changed. I am not understanding the difference in policies or principles as you're defining it here. Can you help me understand a little bit more about how, what a principle versus a policy is to you?
Yeah, a, a, a policy directs, uh, are actually, a, a, a policy is more concrete. You know, and, and, and there's actually actual numbers attached to policies. Whereas principles are more general and they express the intent, they express uh, the, the mindset behind the um, uh, behind the policies. So, so um, you know, the question would be, what is the mindset behind these policies? If you were to think of them as principles?
Why, why don't we focus, why don't we focus on the, wha- whatever you call them, why don't we focus on providing feedback about the individual items? I think that's what they're looking for.
So shall we go through them one by one? Because they all need to be considered.
Well, I want to give everybody a chance to speak. Why, why don't you, why don't you cover, why don't you cover two or three and then let me go to the next council member, okay?
I'll let you go to, to the next council member and, and you can come back to me after everyone's had a chance to speak.
Okay, you want, you want, you want to pick one or two or three to talk about right now?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll uh, let, let the other council member speak and then you can come back to me.
Council, Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, thank you for the presentation and for the work around budget guiding, guiding principles. I think it's a great idea to work on budget, budget guy, guiding principle. And the budget is a moral document that should reflect our values for how we are taking care of each, of each other. And particularly the most vulnerable communities. These principles must articulate these values and be a guide to how to apply those values. Um, so one thing that I want just to in the, in defer is that um, this presentation uh, wa- uh, wasn't posted before the, the, the meeting tonight. So I wondered if this uh, is going to be posted on the website for the public also to, to have it.
We can, um, we can definitely post it um, to a website so that the community can have access to the PowerPoint presentation.
So I have a couple of question with the, eh, eh, guidelines, but first of all, I want to just kind of like say, how were the budget guideline, guiding principles created and who participated in it?
I can speak to um, the draft and, and how, and how they were created. They're, they're, they're based on not only best practices by other agencies. But also based on um, existing policies that you already have that are codified in your budget. Um, as well as in your, your ordinances, um, and in various resolutions that we've had an opportunity to review. Um, so that was how the initial draft of these came about.
And then in terms of who they were shared with after management partners, as they stated, they looked at um, kind of best promising practices from other jurisdictions. They also, as he stated, looked at some of the things that we already have that the council's already approved. I mean, so they really are uh, documented here in one place, but this document was shared with um, internal city staff. So manager, the finance director, myself, we looked at them, um, you know, had a conversation about them, approved them to be brought forth to city council for discussion purposes.
And do you want today to like, uh, this is the first, like, we, we saw these just like couple of day before and, and you like, like you are asking us to approve this today. Is that what I am, is that what is the motion, right?
So um, the motion, the motion as we wrote it was to receive a presentation and to adopt the principles, but only to adopt if the city council accepts them, approves them as written. If they aren't, there is, you know, as, you know, we are very much open to uh, feedback, com- additional conversation, um, and can come back. So this was something that was on the agenda for the last meeting and was uh, moved to this meeting. So um, we're hoping for a really robust conversation about these items. And if you, if there's feedback, you're here to accept that.
Okay, so I ha- I have some questions. Um, so let's start with the budgeting policies. Uh, number two. I have a question about what that it means that annual budgets can only be amended when urgency requires. How and who define urgency?
Steve, do you mind just from uh, kind of best practices, prob- promising practices, what you've seen around that and then we can?
Sure, yeah, the, 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 the concept there, Councilmember Jimenez, is, is that um, is that the, 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 um, on an ongoing basis, the budget wouldn't necessarily be amended to just take care of small issues. It, it's meant to deal with the long range plan as well as issues that come up that are a policy and that, that um, you know, that may represent new priorities. Um, and so the, you know, when, when an urgency requires is that it's not that we're looking to like, you know, just do a nickel and dime approach, but it's really making wholesale changes or so, or something that would be significant. Um, granted, that level of, you know, what does urgency mean would, would likely need to be better defined and it would be helpful to be, you know, better defined so that uh, everybody has a common understanding of what urgency, you know, really means. Um, but, but it's intended to be significant or material changes rather than just um, small minor changes.
And I can just add that right now, what we do and what we've been doing, um, and I know the finance director is um, on and she can correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, once the council approves or adopts the budget. So when you adopted the fiscal year 2021 budget in June, you didn't amend the budget until mid-year. So right now, we don't come to the council all the time if there's changes. We try and kind of group them and say, we're going to come and do significant, bring significant changes. Um, whether that be to the revenue side or expenditure side, once a year. So it's at the mid-year point. And so that's what we do currently. So that's really um, not too far off from what we currently already do with our budget process.
Thank you. And, and who decides what is urgent and who has the control on that?
Typically, that's established really, you know, based on kind of um, coming from the council in terms of, you know, what is, what is considered urgent. Yeah.
So that is something that we will need to define before, kind of like making um, uh, adopting this. Uh, I have other questions and is this is, so number three, and thank you for the uh, and number three, um, when you say um, that uh, the budget, uh, I don't remember, like the budget impact. So my question on number three is, does this mean that the city manager will need to come to the city council for any changes in the budget? Is this decision do not significantly impact policies or affect budget year in fund balance? And what does it mean to not significantly impact policy or affect budget year in fund balance?
So item number, I'm sorry, LaShonda, is, is okay. Yeah, so item number three was intended to really focus more on that if there are some administrative changes that are not changing policy. So in other words, it's not um, saying that we're going to, you know, shift all of our, all of our expenditures from parks to, you know, to the library or something. Um, that's not it, but it's instead intended that, um, that um, that if changes are necessary within a fund, so let's say the general fund. Um, that the city manager would have some authority to make some of those administrative changes. Now, if you don't want to authorize that, then what that would mean is that whenever there's a need to move items between either departments or between line items um, in the budget, that would have to come back to council for approval. As we understood your existing budget policy that's in your, your budget is that um, the city manager does have the authority to make administrative changes and just, you know, to ensure that, that in, in total, the general fund is whole and is not being over expended. But has the authority to move um, budgeted resources between departments as necessary.
Okay, so, eh, so, uh, so it means that if there is no an increase in, in any of the, the fan, the, the, the budget, uh, we won't, it, it won't come to the city council. So for instance, like today, there is a H2 um, item, um, and H3. So that means that uh, the city manager won't need to come for city council approval. Is that right?
So, no, that is, I see, so I will, sorry Laura.
Yeah, no, I, so um, again, a, a lot of, a lot of folks have worked with um, having some budget principles, budget policies in other um, cities. It's something that's common in other cities, has been mentioned a couple of times. And so it's something that over time gets really easy to work with. And there is a kind of common understanding that's developed. Um, and in that, the situation that you're asking about specifically in terms of being able to fill some, some um, positions that were previously um, said we couldn't fill. Uh, that it would increase our, the, what we spend overall on the budget. So absolutely, that would still come to the city council. Um, and
If, if not, you won't need to come to the city council.
Well, but I think that's where it would then impact like a policy level decision because i- i- if it wasn't going to increase the budget, to be able to fill those, you would have to be cutting somewhere else. So there's, there's less latitude in this than you might imagine. And so one of the areas that I'm hearing concerns about that we can try and modify the language would be to further clarify this. And um, it's still fairly, it's still fairly limited, but part of, so some of these are a little bit of a mix of big picture concepts in terms of policies or principles or whatever we call them. They're, they're overarching kind of goals. I look at them as goals. And so we use them as sort of parameters um, in terms of how we uh, want, recommend budgets. But also there is a practical day to day operational component. Um, in terms of operational efficiency and every little teeny tiny change, if it, we're constantly having to do all kinds of things to come back um, on every little thing. There starts to be so much staff work that's done that it's hard to get the business done. Um, and so trying to find that balance and put it into words. Um, so that there is the balance. And again, to repeat, and I, I'm, I don't know if we have the ability to read what we already have as council adopted policy. I don't know, LaShonda or Belinda, if, if we have that ability to, to bring that up tonight. But as Steve mentioned, this actually is reflective of more or less what we currently have. So it's not a big change.
Okay, so I think like, i- it will be important to have a definition of like, what is a significant impact, impact policy and, and just kind of like have more information about that. Um.
Yeah, and part of what I think in terms of my thinking is principles are, are broader. Um, and you know, policies can be very prescriptive and, and we weren't trying to, to sort of have too, like the level of detail. Um, and if that's what the council wants, we can do that. But, but in terms of having something that, that's workable and usable. So people can understand it. Um, you were trying, we weren't trying to have this be a 30 page document.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think it's, it's, it's important to have more clarity because right now I, we, I think like some of us has a lot of questions about what it means. So for instance, like in the reserve policies. I think it's a great, it's, it's good to start looking into having reserve policies. Uh, but I, but I want to know what the number of, or percentage for some of these reserve, for instance, like number seven. Which is no bad thing to have risk management, internal services, fund reserve. Um, but uh, we would like, in order for us to have all these reserves, how we are going to do it? Do we need to um, start carrying services to be able to maintain all these uh, all, all of the reserve policies at the level that uh, we want? Um, um, and, and yeah, how, where does the money for all the reserves come from? Um, I would like to see a plan for making this happen.
Yeah, and that's definitely something that um, we are very unlikely to be able to meet all of these. You know, certainly in the next year or so. And so that's where we can have some discussion about, hey, here's where you're trying to go. Here's some ways that might bring us to that ultimate goal. And here's the timing in which it, it, it can happen and, and you can have choices within, within that. Um, and so at least there's, this is a little bit, I think what they were recommending, again, in terms of best practices and how budget processes flow, is trying to give us again, those, those, those long range goals that are going to get us to that long range fiscal sustainability. I know that one of the things I really kept hearing about, this was, you know, something I probably should have opened with. When I first got here, even prior to the pandemic. So in the whopping four weeks I had before the pandemic, it um, you know, there was really, I was able to meet with the bargaining groups on the second day I was here. And the budget roller coaster that has happened for the past several years is really, really tough on people. And trying to find a way to get off that budget roller coaster and the annual crisis that is, that, that people feel and, and, and really causes a, a lot of angst and concern and disruption. Um, that's part of the recommendation, that's part of the reasoning for recommending something like this is how can we, over the next couple of years, we're not going to be able to do it next year. Let's just be real about that. How can we really start to agree upon a plan to, to be able to get off that budget roller coaster and know that we're going to have money to, you know, do annual COLAs and plan for our capital maintenance and all these other things?
Yeah, no, thank, I, I, I think like, I, I appreciate that. Um, but, but I feel like um, I want to see more of like how, what are the services? Like, I, I, I think like this is a, a great start, but it, but it needs uh, more, more discussion and more because um, I don't see like what in, in, as I said before, uh, budget is a moral document that reflects all values. And I don't like, I, I want to see these values reflected in this guided principle, like the value of like, we value children and youth. So how, what, what are these uh, guiding principles go into? How we are going to support youth and services for youth?
Yeah, maybe what the council will want to do is have a whole separate discussion um, at a future meeting about values, um, and, and what are those values? Because these are not, these are, there's some of these that kind of can tie to some of the value, can tie to values. But, but a true value driven document is not the intent of these principles.
But, but, but I think like these principles should be the guide to how to apply those values. Right? And I, and, and I don't think like I am seeing that here. So I, I, I think like this is a good start. Don't get me wrong. I think like, I am for to have a guiding principles. But I think like it needs more work and how, like, how this um, is a guide document to apply those values that we are talking about. So, and I think uh, I want to see that. And also I want to see a more participatory approach to these. So the public uh, and, and, and other in organizations can be part of these. Um, so uh, because today, uh, when I asked about who created these and how, who participate in these, it seems that it has been just internal. And we saw it on Thursday and we want to make um, a decision today. So I think like for me is, is more about this is a good start, but let's uh, take the time to really make sure that these guiding principles are the, the guys that are going to give us to these uh, to what we really want, which is really um, serve our community and, and, and the most vulnerable community in, in here. Um, so when, when you talk about the goals to preserve local services. Um, I think like how is this reflected in this budget guiding, guiding principles and, and I, I just want to see more of that. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember McLaughlin, but before you go, I just want to say some of the
Councilor McLaughlin, but before you go, I just want to say some of the, a lot of these are pretty self-explanatory. But some of them might be helped with some examples. And I, I think the ones that have been questioned are some of those that could really use a good example or two. Uh, so go ahead, Councilor McLaughlin.
Yes, um, thank you for the presentation. Um, I also would like this presentation, um, put out there for the community at large. I really think what we need in setting forth any principles or policies, and I agree that this document should be, um, something that reflects our values. And we haven't even had a chance to discuss those values at this point. Um, nor has the community had a chance to share its, um, input on how we move forward with putting values into, into action. So, um, I think we do need a special meeting for this. I do want to mention that it seems really, what really struck me was that the reason, the, we're just reaching the point of having fifteen percent, um, in our reserves. And now in, rather than saying, okay, we'll have money, in any extra money we have beyond the reserves can be for getting our services up and running. We know mu- many of our services. Um, right now, like our library and our community centers and such are not fully up and running. So instead the goalpost for reserves gets moved to seventeen percent. That doesn't seem um, to be a reflection of, uh, needing services for our community, which I believe is the value of, uh, many of us. Um, so I too, I just need time to reflect on all of this. And I think we need a collaborative process that includes the community and other stakeholders. And I know that, um, there are different perspectives, uh, that have um, already been put out there in terms of, um, in terms of, um, groups like Lift Up Richmond. Um, and I would love to hear from them. Um, so what I'm going to do, but I first would like to hear from the public speakers. I know, uh, this, I think the city clerk said there are public speakers for this. Um, but what I would like is to, um, after the speakers, call for a special meeting next Tuesday, which is March ninth. And just a one-item meeting, just to have this item fully flushed out with a presentation from Lift Up Richmond. I think they have some very good ideas. And I think, um, that would be a more collaborative process. We could also have, um, on any further, um, presentation from, from staff. But I really think we need to have a collaborative process. I wouldn't feel comfortable going forward with this. I, I, all the questions that have been raised are questions I, I have as well. And there are many, many more here that, um, really strike me as something that is trying to fit things into a box when we're at a point when we have to think about the needs of our community. And, and I just don't see that in, in these so-called principles. I don't see the, um, the, the fact, I see wanting the, all the numbers to crunch. And yes, we want a balanced budget. Uh, we want fiscal sustainability. But we want to prioritize the needs of the community. And I just don't see this document. And, you know, I realize it's something that staff is open to suggestions of changing and all that. But I think we need that collaborative process, uh, before we modify the document. So I'm going to, um, make a motion to that effect after we hear the speakers. Um, and in the meantime, I think, uh, having a chance to reflect on all this further can only help us all. Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Willis.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to say thanks for the present, thanks for the presentation and every, the reasons behind the presentation, because I know we do need to get to fiscal sustainability. But, you know, just looking at, you know, the policies that I'm looking at right now in front of me, I, I wouldn't be able to really give you a comprehensive answer on if these are the policies that I'd want to adopt and I'd want to get like more feedback and participations. In broader strokes, I will say that the kind of, uh, policy and principle I'm looking for is to have a sustainable budget that does increase transparency, participation, but doesn't box us in too much when it comes to us talking about how do we invest in new service levels? Cause you know, before, in the before times, before pandemic and even after, there are people still talking about what about the pool hours here? Or what about the maintenance crew here? You know, there's a lot of those things that come up and I want to be able to have enough flexibility in the budget, a policy that reflects that, that doesn't constrain us in our ability to listen to the concerns and implement, you know, the vision of community members. But I guess just to point out the sections I just found concerning and some that I, you know, preliminarily like, these are just my thoughts. I'm not ready to make any decisions on these tonight. Uh, in the concerns portion, um, all the concerns, uh, under the fiscal sustainability plan. The main problem I have with that language personally is we have had a plethora of budget forecasts in the past and all the budget forecasts we get is doom and gloom. And then fast forward six months or eight months, it's like, oh, well, it looks like we were kind of worried, but there was nothing to be worried about. So who, here we are. I know we need to be prepared for the worst, but I don't want to be, uh, too conservative about our forecast that affects how we're able to implement services. I guess on point eight and fifteen, I would like to be have more fleshed out, uh, one-time resources may only be used to support one-time expenses such as capital improvement. I do like that in general, but I guess I want to see if there's another way that we can be more creative with one-time resources in terms of how we're dealing with our debt recovery and also paying off outstanding debts. Maybe there's a creative way to use one-time resources for things like that. And on point eight, I think, yeah, in point eight, that's, uh, with the one-time resources, I kind of felt like they were connected. And I just wanted to add more of a discussion about point eight, about our reserve policy. I definitely wasn't excited about point six, because when I first got on the council, we talked about increasing our reserve policy to fifteen percent. That was met with resistance. And at that time I did adopt the policy with the understanding that it was just in general a goal. But what I then realized is once we adopt the policy, it became a problem to go against our own reserve policy when we were in a fiscal emergency. So it made things more difficult. So I'm not really interested in wanting to up our reserve policy right now. And, um, and preliminarily, I'm not going to read them out. I just was taking notes as I was going on. Uh, preliminarily, what I like and I'm kind of okay with, it's points nine, ten, seven, fourteen and one. And on point three with the city manager and being able to, uh, have more of a direct like transferring funds or dealing with interdepartmental, uh, resources. I guess the only concern that I have is that I know it is supposed to increase transparency and get us closer to fiscal sustainability. But I guess if that's going to be the intention, I would like the language to reflect that more, that shows that this is about transparency, that shows that our policy is just to make sure that our service levels are at top notch. And if there is a real problem, that there will be a public discussion on how these resources get spent. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to give that feedback on the policies as they stand, right as I see them right now. I do want to dive a little bit more in and get feedback. I actually liked the calendar that was put up in the presentation, just in conclusion. Uh, that was talking about just receiving these policies, talking about them, but also going out about the policies and getting community feedback about the budget and principles that the council and the city of Richmond should be having around the budget. I would rather go through that process first before I sit here today and adopt these, uh, policies. But yeah, that's my feedback so far. I want to go to the public speakers too, and thank you for the presentation.
Other councilors have questions? Uh, uh, Councilor Marteas, or you want to go again?
Yes, yes. Um, yeah, I, I, I want to, uh, thank everyone for, for the work that they've done. And, um, I especially want to, uh, thank council member, uh, Jimenez, who actually articulated the root of my confusion uh, that I had, had with the word principles. You know, uh, principles are what you live by, policies are how you live it. So, um, so this, um, uh, i- i- if you want particulars, uh, look at number nine, uh, ongoing resources and operations. It says ongoing expenditures should be supported by ongoing revenues. So the question is, how do we determine what is ongoing, um, revenues? Uh, in your presentation, you said that, uh, property transfer tax, you described property transfer tax as an ongoing fund. But I've heard discussion that property transfer tax should not be considered as ongoing fund because, because it, it varies. And then there's, and there's other funds that we receive that vary, that are ongoing. So the question is, who decides what is ongoing and what isn't? And, and the who is what is the crux of, of all these policies that are being laid out? Looking at, um, at, uh, uh, let's see. Policy number twelve, general fund revenues should not be earmarked in order to allow for maximum flexibility when making funding decisions. Anytime, uh, so when we set money aside for positions not filled, is that not earmarked? You know, for instance, the, uh, police department has had funding earmarked or set aside for, for positions that were never filled the entire year. So, 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 you know, um, who determines what an earmark is? And, and you know, what policies or, or, or what guidelines do we, do we have to determine what an earmark is? So there's, uh, there's a lot of questions, you know, about the language of these policies. And then I think number twenty actually illustrates the principles of this document. It says service level reductions will be implemented if other strategies are not possible or cannot be achieved in a timely faction, fashion. So, so not possible to do what? To do all of the nineteen above? So that means that service levels are the last consideration. And service to the community is what we're here for. So, you know, it, 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 it really, um, uh, this seems like the, this document does not address the needs of Richmond residents.
Okay. Any other comments from council members? Uh, I don't see anybody. If I, I'm missing, you just speak up. Um, I guess we go to the public speakers, Madam Clerk.
This is the last call for speakers. Okay, this item is closed. We have seven speakers. Just one. Please call the speakers.
Sure. The seven speakers are Torm Nompraser, Tarnell Abbott, David Sharples, Jill, Benjamin Terrio, Edith Pastrana and Randy Joseph. I'll start with Torm. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Good evening, uh, Honorable Mayor and City Council and, and Vice Mayor. Um, and also, um, the, uh, folk, the staff and also the consultant who worked on this document. Uh, I appreciate, um, your work. What concerned me the most is, this is not the first time talking about a budget. Many time, city council member itself get confused, don't understand the budget, the language and, uh, the formula. And how would we in the committee will understand? Um, it's not only the city council who represent us, but we also should be educated and understand what the budget look like and, and all of this. I think I agree with, um, uh, City Council Hermannus and said, yeah, it's a good start, but I think it's a lot of work to be done. And I also agree with, Council McLaughlin to say that we need to put, um, the committee input and other, uh, player to kind of look into this. I want to address that. One thing is, can you develop a, a system that city council can look at it, understand? Yes. And then committee member, we can look at it and yes, we understand what the budget look like. And also, uh, the most important transparency. And for example, if there is significant, significant impact, what does that mean? Does that mean if the city manager can divert to, um, budget from one program to another program? Unless it's over fifty thousand, for example, a hundred thousand, and then you have to come back to bring to city council. It need to be clear, those and more, more clear and, but, but also more transparency. And then we as committee can also follow with those, um, uh, whatever, uh, the budget of the city and whatever the plan, we, we want to be part of that. Uh, so, um, I, I appreciate all the work, but I think I would like to see something more, um, easier and clearer.
Time has expired. Thank you. Next speaker is Tarnell Abbott. Tarnell, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, this is Tarnell Abbott, Richmond resident. Um, I have concerns, uh, over a number of them. Number three, I, you know, I, I think it's just too vague and I think it, it would have been helpful to have a comparison with what we have now as opposed to what this says and, and something very clear to say what the difference is. I don't think it's right to, uh, cut one department to feed another, um, without going to city council. Uh, I have a problem with number eight. I'm sorry, it takes too long scrolling and reading the print and all that. I think that, uh, replacement of, of, uh, equipment has been, um, we've been overzealous on that in the past. And I think we're going to have to be tightening the belt on equipment and learn how to fix things. We used to have an excellent equipment mechanic, who we, uh, chased out. Uh, cause when you're a union activist, you get a big target on your back. Uh, number twelve, general fund revenues should not be earmarked. What? I'm sorry, but you know, I think they do need to be earmarked. You need a certain budget for each department. You know, let's let the library have X number of dollars. Let's let Parks and Rec have X number of dollars and so on. I think, I, that just doesn't make sense to me at all. Number twenty, you're already talking about service. Um, you can't talk about service reductions without bringing in the unions. There's lots of strategies that you can use without having to reduce, uh, the, your services. And number twenty-five, uh, I think you need to look at the budget, uh, scenarios for Point Maloney and Zenica, because those are going to sink us really fast. You need to look at the financials.
Thank you. Next speaker is David Sharples. David, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Uh, good evening, city council. My name's David Sharples. I'm a resident of North and East, and I wanted to speak tonight because I'm concerned that this will take the power of the purse away from Richmond's elected leaders and give it to the city manager. And that the, this will lead to the city stashing away cash and cutting city services. Um, the city manager will assume the power of making budget cuts without council review and approval. And these cuts will occur without the opportunity for public review or comment. Uh, the city manager will have the power to determine whether budget cuts and adjustments will even be considered by council based on her judgment as to whether the need is urgent. The city manager will have the power to determine what is a significant policy decision or impact to the city's year-end balance and decide whether council even hears about the city's decisions to cut or change the budget. We have council members who have lived and worked in Richmond for decades. They know the city's needs intimately. Um, they must be intimately involved in approving any budgetary cuts or funding. They are elected officials who work hard to represent us and this powerful tool should not be stripped from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jill. Please state your full name for the record. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can start when you're ready. Jill? Jill?
Good evening, Mayor Butt and members of the city council. My name is Jill Perry, and I'm a finance manager in the city's employment and training department and also a member of IFPT Local 21. Local 21 supports the goal of creating a clear fiscal policy for the city of Richmond to assist our city in responsible budgeting. However, such fiscal policies should be drafted with broad input from those of us who provide city services. Richmond elected Richmond's elected leaders, community organizations, businesses, and residents. The fiscal and budget policies of the city should also reflect the needs of the Richmond communities we serve and the values of Richmond's leadership. Unfortunately, the proposed budget guiding principles presented tonight fall short. Instead, the proposed principles were drafted by an outside consultant firm with zero collaboration with the city's rank and file workers, Richmond businesses, community partners, or the residents we serve. The result is a set of proposed principles that reflect only the values of the city's consultant, namely constraining spending and stashing away more cash reserves even at the expense of potentially cutting services to residents. Please ask yourselves, why would we pass a policy saying we can't use reserves to sustain service levels even in case of an emergency? And why move the goalpost on our viable 15% cash reserve policy and why now? The city can continue to build its general fund reserve without continually increasing its reserve policy goal. City workers and the people of Richmond deserve a collaborative approach. We deserve better than a scarcity model that would ensure more unmet needs moving forward. I hope we can count on you not to adopt these budget guiding principles, but rather to encourage a more collaborative approach that includes our input. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Edith Pastrano. Edith, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can start when you're ready. Edith?
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, hi, everybody. My name's Edith Pastrano, Richmond resident, District 5. And I pretty much want to reference that other folks have been bringing up, including some of the council members. Um, I I really think that already the city manager's been handed this power to fund vacancies within departments with absolutely no review process from the council nor the public. And, um, by having these policies developed by outside consultants with, you know, expectation that the city council would just approve this is kind of ridiculous to me. Um, and I don't like the idea of, uh, money being stowed away for who knows what. And then there's really no process, no clear, um, picture as to like how this money's gonna get spent or who's gonna get this money, uh, because we do have services and we do have needs absolutely now more than ever because of the pandemic and what we're struggling with. And I think that the 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 process needs to be much more transparent. Um, uh, I I don't agree with anything moving forward as far as like just adopting these as is. I think, um, we need to be more specific about what the intent is for certain budgets. Um, and yeah, I that's, that's what I wanted to to address. Um, so yeah, please, please make sure that the the intent of this is this, these policies are in absolute, you know, um, in sync with what our representatives are are intending for our community and what community members, uh, need and, um, are, you know, what 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 is missing now. Uh, thank you very much.
And our two last speakers will be Randy Joseph and Ofelia Alvarez. Randy, you have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start when you're ready.
Yes, hello. My name is Randy Joseph. I'm a Richmond resident. Uh, I'm calling because I think I every time I call the city council, I say the same things. Like, we can't make decisions about budget and city finances without community involvement. And having an outside agency to come in without community involvement to speak to community, to tell us how to spend our money, tell us how to use our money, makes absolutely no sense. And I agree with Mayor McLoughlin that we need to have a presentation next week to have a community conversation about how money should be spent with the budget. It is as simple as that. We should not be having the 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 way money should be spent, how money should be put away should not be in the power of one person. It should be a commu- community collaborative project that includes everybody. And everybody needs to have a voice and everybody needs to have a say, because at the end of the day, it's the community's money that's being spent. If we do not have, um, this, if we do not have these things in place, then what are we doing in the first place? We're not focusing on community. We're not focusing on things down the road. We're not even looking at, we're in crises right now. We need, we need to have these conversations immediately. We need to have these conversations with community aspect in mind and with a community lens. If we do not have this, that we do not have a, you do not have community's heart in mind, and it just makes this a a process where it makes it illegitimate, and that we just have outside people taking control of the city. And I know nobody wants that. So please do not start a budget conversation to have people look at a budget without community involvement first. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ofelia Alvarez. Ofelia, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor Butt and members of the city council. My name is Ofelia Alvarez. I am a Richmond resident and a buyer in the city's finance department. I am also a member of IFPT Local 21. I am calling today because I am concerned that the budget guiding principles presented to you are lacking reference to values such as racial and social equity which should be ingrained in a in budget guidelines as guiding principles for how taxpayer funds will be utilized to serve Richmond residents. Our budget should reflect the values that the city holds. I am also concerned that the collaborative approach with broad input from those of us who provide city services as well as input from Richmond's elected leaders, community organizers, businesses, and residents did not take place when these principles were created. We deserve budget principles and fiscal policies that reflect the values and needs of the Richmond, of Richmond's leadership and residents, not just a scarcity model that would ensure more unmet needs moving forward. I hope you can count on, I I hope I could count on you not to adopt these principles uh, as presented, but rather to encourage a more collaborative and inclusive approach that includes input from the community and le- elected leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we finish, I'm gonna check in with Benjamin Terrio and Shiva Mishak, because their hands were previously up, but I don't see them right now. Ben? Benjamin Terrio? Did you want to speak on this item? Ben? Guess not. Check in with Shiva. Shiva Mishak? Did you want to speak on this item?
Yes, can you, can you hear me? Okay?
I can. You can go ahead and start.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, first of all, um, thank management partners for the presentation and, um, thanks to city council and the mayor for letting me speak. Um, I think that a lot of my concerns on this item have already been sort of stated, but I just want to reiterate, um, that I think, you know, kind of applying my, um, literature degree to reading, to reading the wording of these budgeting principles. I think that a lot of the wording is, um, too vague for such an important document. Um, you know, especially as as has already been stated, things about, you know, um, determining urgency, determining what is significant and what isn't. Um, I think that, you know, I've I've spent a lot of time looking at the Richmond budget and I, you know, even with a lot of time and a good bit of financial literacy, it's a ready, uh, um, a ready, already a very difficult process to understand what's going on. And I think that any sort of principles that the, um, that the city adopts should be as transparent as possible, as unambiguous as possible. Um, and so I really urge council to, um, wait on approving this. Um, and, you know, ask the city and management partners to provide much more clarity on, um, this item. And I also want to reiterate what other speakers have been saying, that, um, I also believe that the budget is, um, um, budgeting principles can be a statement of our values. They can very much, you know, enumerate a fiscal policy we're leaning toward, but they can also really outline and establish parameters of the city's values. Um, so I would appreciate holding over on this item and getting some more clarity before you all move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And that was the last of public speakers.
Mr. Mayor?
You're muted. Sorry, I was having trouble getting unmuted. Uh, did Did Ofelia Alvarez get a chance to speak?
She did.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, let me, let me, I haven't spoken on this yet. Let me, let me, let me just.
I was gonna check in about a public speaker just one more time, Ben Terrio, because I know he usually does, you know, speak on these. But Brian, again, that's all.
He doesn't want to speak.
Never mind. Sorry. Carry on.
Okay, so, um, there's been some pretty interesting discussion about this. And I I I think there are some, you know, perceptions uh, about this that that may not jive with the intent. You know, fir- first of all, this is not a budget. Um, it 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 doesn't say where any money is gonna go, except maybe, except maybe the parts about, um, about reserve objectives, and I'll come back to that in a minute. Um, it's, it's not a, but it's not really a value statement either. Um, I I think a value statement is something that, you know, along the lines of, uh, uh, you know, making a statement that, um, that the library is the highest priority in the city and we're going to fund it at a level where A, B, and A, B, C, and D can happen. That's not what this is either. Uh, the, I I I see this more as a guideline for the city manager uh, to come back to the city council with a proposed budget. The charter gives the city manager the authority to present, to prepare a budget for the city council's consideration. It also, uh, it also says the mayor shall, uh, assist in preparing the budget. But these are some guidelines. I think if you don't give your city manager some guidelines, then, um, you know, she's gonna, she's gonna be buffeted by, um, by desires from all over the place. But, you know, some of these things are really simple, like, uh, like debt will not be, well, it says short or long-term debt. I don't know why it didn't just say debt. She will not be used to support ongoing operations. And if, and I think that what that tells the city manager is that, look, don't go out and borrow money to balance, to balance the budget, particularly if it's for ongoing operations. You know, the council can always go somewhere else. The council can adopt any kind of budget they want. But but that, you know, that gives her a starting, a starting point. You know, some of these others are pretty simple. Ongoing expenditure should be supported by ongoing revenues. Um, so I I see these, and and, you know, some of you have been kind of hard on our consultants. Um, they, they didn't come here to tell us how to run our city. What they came to tell us was that in their, in their experience and in their opinion, these are best practices. We can, we can either adopt them or not. But, uh, I I don't know that any of us, certainly I don't, I don't, I don't have the kind of experience to, uh, to tell, to tell any of you what what the best practices are. I'd like to hear it from somebody who, you know, makes a profession out of that. Doesn't mean I gotta accept it. But, uh, I I, you know, I'm, I I don't think that's a reason to beat up on them because they're, they're bringing something to the city from from the outside. They're just telling us, they're just telling us what well-run cities do in other places, and we can take it or leave it. Um, as far as where we go with this, I I would agree with you that, um, that some of these need some discussion and some of them maybe need some wordsmithing, and some of them need some examples, uh, to make them work. Um, you know, and some of them, you may want to tweak the numbers. They they've told us, and I've heard this before, this is my understanding, that best practices is two months, uh, expenditures from your general fund. So they're just telling us that. If the city council doesn't want to do that, we don't have to do it. We can make that change. As far as where we go from here, I know Councilor McLoughlin's gonna make a recommendation to make a whole council meeting out of this. Personally, I I don't think that's necessary. I think we can, we could carry this over to another council meeting. We could give people an opportunity to review it and make comments on it. And and maybe the consultants would come back with some changes and we could adopt it. I don't, I don't think we need a, a six-hour council meeting to decide whether we want a seventeen percent reserve or a fifteen percent reserve. So that's just, that's just my opinion. So, uh, let's go to, uh, I I think Councilor McLoughlin wanted to make a motion, so do you want to do that?
Can I, can I speak first?
Yeah, I'm okay with her speaking first.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I I think like, I I don't see that, uh, nobody is saying that we should know have, uh, guidelines and principles. Um, but these guidelines shape the way the city manager made decision about how to spend money and who will be part of these decisions. This is absolutely about the public values we have for our city. And and I think like is not, the the, and this require time. And I, and I think like having, uh, a special meeting, um, for making the time to make sure that we have a a values or a a guidelines that really going to give direction to the city manager in a way that our community and everybody is aligned with, that is about protecting services and protecting the the people who and serving our our entire community, uh, is is so important. So I just, uh, want to say that I support to have this, it's time. I think it's necessary so we can go deeper, because then, uh, you will be saying, and everybody will saying that is that we don't want to work on this. And what we, like, I think like what, uh, City Council McLoughlin is saying is that, yes, this is important. And and this the same time. So I I will second your motion, uh, City Member McCraffen, to really put the time and it's, uh, and put on a special meeting so we can have this conversation in 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 the deep way that is necessary so we can all agree on what are these guidelines that are going to give the direction that city council and community at once for the city manager.
Yes. Yeah, let me make my motion. I think Councilmember, uh, Hermannus and I are on the same page here. Um, and she's already said she'll second the idea of a special meeting. So my motion is to set up a special city council meeting on March 9th, which is a week from today, um, to discuss these budget, uh, to discuss, to discuss budget guiding principles. And this meeting will be a one-item meeting and include any, um, presentation from staff and a presentation from Lift Up Richmond. Fifteen minutes for each presentation, I think is a good amount, to be followed with, uh, with Q and A from council members on both presentations and public comment from the public. So that's my motion. I think it is important to have this, um, full meeting. Um, and it doesn't have to be a six-hour meeting. It'll be a meeting that takes up as much time as it needs to take up, but we won't have to worry about other items. Just a one-item meeting next Tuesday. Thank you.
Okay, for a second.
Great, Con. And Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, I just to clarify, um, in terms of being able to support that meeting, we won't, we won't be able to, as staff, turn around like staff report or revisions to to cut. We only have one day to 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 do all of the work that you might want to do to see any revisions based on tonight's discussion. So just in terms of expectations, if we're gonna do a meeting next week, there won't be any new documents from staff.
Well, I don't think, I don't think the movers want any more input. Well, I don't think, I don't think the movers want any more input from staff. I think they want to, I think they want to run it, so.
You know, if, if staff wanted to share anything more, but if they've already put out everything they have, we have that information and we'll hear from another presentation and, and we could discuss both.
It's, it's logistics, we, in, in terms of timing. It looks like City Clerk might want to.
I want to ask a question. What time can the meeting start?
I think six-thirty sounds like a good time because people are used to our meetings starting at six-thirty.
You want, you want to take a vote, Madam Clerk?
I'd like to make a comment, Tom.
All right, go ahead.
Well, I am confused in that if you don't have your professional staff there participating and responding to various concerns, all you're doing is allowing yourself to listen to the public, who I can assure you is not as professional, knowledgeable as your staff. So we're gonna sit there and we're gonna hear a number of these individuals and organizations tell us the guidelines for policy. And there's no one to say, well, that may be a good idea, but it does not reflect the overall perception of how governments operate because X, Y, Z. So I don't understand the purpose of the meeting. If you just want to have a session where people can complain and tell us what they want to do without professional staff, I consider it a waste of time.
We don't, we don't need staff. We've got Lift Up Richmond. They're the new staff.
No, no, no.
They run the city now, so they'll be there and they'll tell us what, what they want, and then we'll give them, we'll give them what they want. So let's, let's vote on this and move on. Let's just vote on it.
Can I just clarify for Councilmember Bates? We want staff there. We want to be able to have more time to reflect on what staff gave us already. And we also want another presentation, and we will have a Q and A on both presentations, that one we've already heard, one we will hear here, and we'll be ready to provide some input and some definitive approval of some document after we hear from the, the, the second presentation as well as reflect on this first presentation, so.
Why can't you wait until the staff is available to be present to give us counterpositions or whatever?
Staff will be present. Staff will be present because we need to move forward on this.
The consultants and the professionals are not going to be there. That's what the city manager just indicated.
Whether or not the professionals, the consultants are here or not, our staff will be there.
All right. Look, let's, let's, let's vote on this, okay?
I'm sorry.
Let's vote. Let's just vote and do it.
Can I?
No.
Can I speak, please?
No, no, let's vote on it and move on. We've got a lot of things on the agenda tonight, and if we keep, if we keep beating this to death, we're not going to get to them. So let's just vote and, and if, if the vote carries, we'll talk about it next week. Go, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bates voted no. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Um, I have a previous engagement, but I'll vote yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember McLoughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Mayor Butt?
No.
The motion passes with Mayor Butt and Councilmember Bates voting no.
Okay, let's move on to the next item.
Thank you.
Our next item is item H two. Anyone that would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand now by selecting the raise hand button. If you're joining us by video and the star key and the number nine, if you're joining us by phone. And Ursula, I'm sorry, just working with this.
Si desea dar comentarios sobre el tema de la agenda H dos, por favor levante su mano ahora. Para comentar por computadora, seleccione la opción de participante en la parte de abajo de su pantalla y seleccione la opción que dice raise hand para levantar su mano. Para comentar por teléfono o prima estrella nueve. Gracias.
Item H two is to receive updates on the fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one budget, overtime reports, and city bonds, and direct staff on which option to choose for the pension obligations swap. I don't see anyone with a raise hand.
Who's going to do the staff report?
Good evening. Belinda Brown, vice director. Tony, can you do the presentation?
Can you see it?
Yes. Next slide. Next slide. Okay, so this evening, I want to give a quick presentation on the January update for the budget update. Some of the information that you're going to see here is not updated from the mid-year changes that were approved in February, so you won't see those changes until we present the February report. So we're going to give the budget update for January, the overtime report update for January, and then we will go into another smaller presentation on the city bonds and swaps. And our budget goals remain the same, which would be to acquire a structurally balanced budget, preserve services to the extent possible, still to consider impacts of COVID-nineteen services, minimize staff reductions, and increase our cash reserves policy level, which will also help us maintain our bond ratings. Antonio?
Good evening. So quickly looking at period seven, general fund numbers, we see that the year-to-date actuals, the year-to-date actuals are at fifty-eight percent. Due to timing issues, we are usually below this level at this time of the year. And I mean, the main items causing this are the documentary transfer tax and the sales tax, both of which were updated in mid-year a couple of weeks back. For general fund expenditures, we're also at fifty-eight percent, which is normal for, for January. Several expenditure items that were adjusted during the major include the unfunded CalPERS liability, professional services, a transfer to the housing authority, and, and overtime. And focusing on overtime, again, this was before the mid-year updates, so you see several of these departments being over their budget amounts. When we do the presentation next in April for February, those amounts will, will look more in line. So at bottom, at the end of January, before mid-year, we're at ninety-eight percent of overtime for the general fund. And this will change when we do our next presentation.
So next, we're going to talk about our outstanding debt and our swaps. We had three swaps, excuse me, at the January twenty-sixth council meeting, when we were reviewing the financial reports from the auditors. Council had several questions regarding our debt portfolio and more, more so the swaps. At that time, we had three outstanding swaps. There was one for successor agency, and then we had two for the pension obligation bonds. As of this evening, we have revised and, and revised our financing for some of our debt regarding the successor agency, so we no longer have that swap. So now we're down to two swaps, which are attributable to the pension obligation bonds. Later in the presentation, we will be talking about a mandatory termination that we have coming up in twenty twenty-three, and we will have two options to discuss with council. And they both come with pros and cons, and we'll kind of get into that a little bit and then try to get some direction from council on which way you refer to, to move on that. So this evening, we have Joe Mortensen, George Majors, and John Palmer here. So, Joe, we'll give it to you now. Next slide, Antonio.
Sure. Thanks. Thanks, Ms. Brown, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Joe Mortensen, and I'm a senior managing director at Public Resources Advisory Group. We have been the city's municipal advisor since twenty fifteen. So I will start with a brief overview of bonds generally and a review of the city's current outstanding debt. And then George and I will describe how interest rate swaps work, and then review certain actions that will need to be taken in the near future, as Belinda mentioned. So first, let's take a step back to the basics. What is a bond and why do municipalities use them? A bond is a promise on the part of a borrower to repay a lender for borrowed money. When municipalities issue bonds, it receives money from the bondholders for their purchase of the bonds, and then in return, the municipality agrees to repay that amount plus interest annually until the bonds mature. One of the better analogies for bonds is a home mortgage. Most people don't have enough cash on hand to pay the full purchase price of a home, so they take on a mortgage to buy a house so that they can pay monthly over time, over a longer period of time. So generally speaking, most municipal bonds are issued to finance long-lived capital assets like government buildings, fire and police stations, roads, municipal utilities, and debt of other enterprises like airports and convention centers. Bonds are useful in spreading the cost of large projects over their useful life, much like the example of the homeowner taking out a mortgage to finance the purchase of a home they live in for many years. Bonding spreads large capital costs over a longer period of time to make them more affordable. Funding long-lived assets with bonds also helps to ensure intergenerational equity. And what that means is that you're not overburdening current taxpayers with the cost of an asset that will be, that will benefit, you know, future taxpayers. So one example is the state revolving fund loan that the city just approved last week. That will fund improvements to the wastewater treatment plant that will materially extend the useful life of that plant. It would be unfair to make current rate payers pay the entire cost of a facility over just a few years that will be used by generations to come. And that would require user rates to be astronomically high to fund those costs. So borrowing allows the city to spread those costs over the years the facility will be used and ensure that the cost is spread out equitably among the rate payers over time. Next slide piece. So this slide provides an overview of the city's current outstanding debt. I know it's going to be hard to read, but in the top set of boxes, we show the city's bonds, loans, and leases that are payable from the general fund or from pension tax override revenues. There are about a hundred and five million dollars of lease revenue bonds that the city currently has outstanding, and they're payable from a variety of sources, including the general fund, the port, and, and the port, as well as other city cost centers. The city also has about a hundred and sixty-five million dollars of pension obligation bonds outstanding. And the city issued those bonds twice in nineteen ninety-nine and then in two thousand and five, and the proceeds of those bonds were used to pay a portion of the unfunded pension liability to CalPERS. We'll be discussing those bonds and the related interest rate swaps later in this presentation. So the city also has a number of loan agreements and leases it enters into for smaller capital expenditures, and they total just over ten million dollars as of June thirtieth. So in the middle set of boxes is the debt of the sewer enterprise, and there's about a hundred and eighteen million dollars of revenue bonds that are outstanding. That does not include the fifty-million-dollar state revolving fund loan that was just approved. The city periodically issues bonds for the sewer system, generally about every two years, to keep pace with the need to fund improvements to the collection system and the wastewater treatment plant. And then lastly, the city also has related entities that issue debt that is payable from revenues that are entirely separate from the general fund or its enterprises. And they include debt of the successor agency and land secured debt that is paid through property tax assessments and special taxes that are paid by the property owners in those specific areas. Next slide, please. So over the last four years, the city has taken advantage of generally declining interest rates to refinance outstanding bonds for savings and to opportunistically terminate certain of the interest rate swap agreements, as was mentioned earlier. And since twenty seventeen, the city has refunded six series of outstanding bonds and terminated two associated swaps to generate over forty-two million dollars worth of net present value savings. And this includes nearly twenty-seven million that will accrue to the general fund, about four-point-two million that will accrue to the port, and over five million to the sewer enterprise. Next slide, please. So turning now to the topic of interest rate swaps, we'll begin first by explaining the circumstances under which the city has used swaps in the past. Beginning in two thousand and six, the city entered into several interest rate swap agreements that were associated with the sewer enterprise, the Civic Center lease revenue bonds, certain bonds at the successor agency, and then the two thousand and five pension bonds. The city entered into these swap agreements because it expected to realize significant interest cost savings relative to issuing traditional fixed-rate bonds. The city has since terminated all but two of its swaps, and the two that remain are associated with those two thousand and five pension bonds. These swaps were entered into because the pension bonds were going to convert to variable rate bonds in twenty thirteen and then again in twenty twenty-three, which would have left the city exposed to future interest rate risk, since the, the interest rate on those bonds would, would float. The swaps that were entered into when the fixed payer swap rates declined to a level that was compelling enough to the city to, to enter into the swap. And that happened about a year after the bonds were originally issued, and that allowed the city to convert those future variable rates into an effective fixed rate of interest. Next slide, please. So with that as a backdrop, we'll turn to discussion, to a discussion of what swaps are and how they work. So an interest rate swap is really more appropriately referred to as an interest rate exchange agreement. And what that means is two parties agreed to exchange periodic interest payments. At the beginning of a swap, the value of those payments is essentially equal on both sides of the trade. Unlike debt, those swaps do not involve any payment of principal between the parties. However, the interest calculations are made against something that is called the notional amount, which is typically the same as the outstanding principal amount of the bonds that are associated with the swap.
Yeah.
The most common type of swap used by municipalities is one that effectively converts a variable rate obligation to fixed rate, like the pension swap. So it's referred to as synthetic fixed-rate debt. One party, in other words, the swap counterparty pays the other party, with the city in this example, a variable rate of interest, while the other party pays a fixed rate to the counterparty. The variable rate payment paid by the counterparty to the city is typically tied to a short-term index such as LIBOR or SIFMA and is expected to largely offset the variable rate payment that the city is making on its bonds, making the all-in rate the city pays effectively a fixed rate. So before George Majors turns to a more detailed description of this structure, we want to point out just a few things about the swap market. First is the swap market is very large. It's more than four hundred trillion dollars of outstanding swaps in the market, much more than the bond or the equities market. So these are not, you know, highly esoteric products. They are used every single day by large, sophisticated financial institutions, corporations, and investors. The documentation of swap agreements is highly standardized, and the pricing of interest rate swaps is very transparent and accessible. And I know George has a few other thoughts on this, and I'll cede the floor over to him at this point.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Mayor and members of council, my name is George Majors. I'm the principal in the Majors Group. I've worked for the city since joining Work Harrington in nineteen eighty-nine, now on projects going back thirty years to nineteen ninety. For the last, I guess, fifteen since two thousand and six, I've focused on the city's swaps, and so have come to be known as your swap advisor. I think Joe made those points exceedingly well, and I, I think Joe, we could probably just move on to slide fourteen. So slide fourteen is a diagram that illustrates much of what Joe just described, but hopefully it'll make things clearer. On the left side of the diagram, we have a traditional fixed-rate loan or fixed-rate bond issue in which the city hires a banking team to identify investors willing to lend money to the city for twenty, twenty-five, thirty years to finance long-term capital projects. That financing team's goal is to find the lowest interest rate that investors will accept over that long period of time. The advantage of these fixed-rate loans is that there are no future risks. Once the loan issue is, the bond issue is completed, the city knows both its interest and principal payments to the bondholders. There are exceedingly rare circumstances in which that bond issue could ever be accelerated. So the city has certainty, it has budgetary certainty, and this accomplishes Uh, so the city has certainty, it has budgetary certainty, and this accomplishes uh generational goals and spreading uh costs and benefits over the useful life of the facility that Joe described earlier. On the right side, right-hand side, we have this synthetic fixed rate structure, which accesses the variable rate or short short-term market for taxes and uh investors. This is a much more um aggressive pricing instrument. There is less risk for the investors. There is more demand for these bonds. Uh, however, that doesn't give us the fixed rate that we're looking for. So by combining an interest rate swap in which the city receives a floating rate designed to correlate highly to the expected payments to those variable rate bondholders. Hence, we have our two wavy lines and the Xs uh kind of from an illustration perspective, uh canceling each other out, leaving us with a substantially expected fixed rate. So the purpose again, as Joe mentioned earlier in our presentation, uh for using swaps is to save money. Uh, and if this were, for example, a fifty million dollar financing, the difference between four percent and three point three percent would be about three hundred thousand dollars a year. And that money would be available to put to use for other city purposes. Um. However, as you can see, our in our parenthetical here, uh we have some of these components are estimated. Uh, therefore, they're not guaranteed, and that creates uncertainty and therefore risk that in the future, those costs will not be as expected, uh and that the actual financing cost could be higher, not only higher than the three point three, but higher potentially than the four percent. Um, so going on a page, uh the next slide fifteen. Excuse me, I'm gonna catch up with you on my computer. Um, this slide is intended to describe or really the top bullet point. The primary focus of the financing team in considering the synthetic fixed rate structure versus fixed rate bonds is to assess this risk and disclose it to the city council. So there are several types of risk. Um, we don't have the time to go through this in a lot of detail tonight. Um, but this is the focus. We identify the risks, we assign we, meaning your financing team, and that would be your swap advisor, your financial advisor. Um, city attorney is involved in this process. Uh, city staff, finance director and his staff, um outside council as well. In identifying these risks, assigning probabilities to them happening, hopefully low, uh and that the potential magnitude of what they are, and ultimately coming up uh with a recommendation to proceed or not based on the valuation of the risks versus what we expect the savings to be. And so these were very extensive thoughtful processes that manifested in generally presentations uh to council in working sessions, um staff reports and ultimately resolutions of the council that were expected or um requested to be adopted to move forward with these transactions. So a very thorough process and as Joe mentioned, transparent pricing. And no question whatsoever about uh documentation and those elements. So um, nothing, they're unusual for municipalities in general and their staff, but not for pretty much the rest of the world of finance and not really raising many issues uh or or risks in your very expert financing team's mind. And I think ultimately a thorough process that resulted in city council getting comfortable to move forward with these transactions in the past. Um, it was primarily the uh Lehman default and financial crisis, as well as in twenty fifteen uh city credit deterioration that did lead to some uh additional costs for this approach relative to what we might have experienced had we done fixed rate bonds all along. Uh, we didn't have a crystal ball, uh didn't anticipate those or assign the high probability to them. So on this page, what I would like to do before we transition into the next page, which does describe or discuss the existing uh or remaining two swaps. And as um Belinda mentioned, one faces a mandatory termination in August of twenty twenty-three that the city uh should address sooner rather than later. And these are city credit deterioration. So when you are party to a swap, uh both parties want to know that the other side can make the payments and otherwise perform under the contract. Uh, if you're, and these are thirty-year contracts potentially, so if the city or the other party's credit quality declines, uh, the other party can be concerned that they will not be able to make their payments and has the right to terminate the contract early and be paid the market, the then-current market value of the swap. So it is important to maintain credit quality and that, you know, as you know, and it's been discussed quite a bit tonight, has to do with appropriate reserve levels and structurally balanced budgets. The cost in twenty fifteen of the city's downgrade was was considerable. It was five or more million dollars. Um, and and I think that's actually that potentially a conservative estimate. And then on the last point, termination payment funding risk. So we have a termination payment that the city's facing in twenty twenty-three. Uh, we need to know that we can in fact fund that. Termination payment. Um, and that's going to go to the question of do we address these uh this open item sooner rather than later? Because if we wait till twenty twenty-three, we have uncertainty between now and then about market conditions and circumstances of the city. Whereas uh current market conditions are relatively favorable for the two options that uh are listed on the next page. So next slide, please. Okay. Um, as Belinda described, there are two remaining swaps at the city. They're associated with the pension obligation bonds. Uh, we call them the B-one and B-two bonds and therefore the B-one and B-two swaps. The B-one swap was entered into in two thousand and six. It became effective, so the cash flows commenced in twenty thirteen when the B-one bonds started paying current interest. That swap has worked as intended. Um, the payments to bondholders are substantially identical uh to the receipts on the swap. We don't have some of the problems that other swaps do because we have uh committed funding on the variable rate bonds. They are floating rate notes priced to an index so that the swap can match them exactly. Uh, and we don't have a problem of those bonds not of being recourse. They are non-recourse. Uh, we know that they're in place until twenty thirty-four. B-one swap has worked well. The B-two swap, as part of the restructuring in twenty fifteen, um, that occurred because of the city's credit downgrades. Um, part of the negotiations required that we agree to terminate this swap, the B-two swap in August of twenty-three. That was, gave us eight years back in twenty fifteen, we negotiated it. But now we're only two years uh away. And it's, I think, time to focus on this relatively soon. So option A is that we finance, we sell bonds to finance this termination payment. As of February nineteenth, it was thirty-three point five million dollars. Um, in, over the next two years, it can go up or down some, but I think the shi- city should expect it to continue to be a substantial payment obligation. Uh, so that would require selling new bonds, new debt to the city and using the proceeds of that issue to pay the swap counterparty uh the termination payment. Option B essentially is to negotiate with RBC, the swap counterparty, to remove the early termination requirement in exchange for increasing the payment rate in the swap. This would be a less expect, a less expensive alternative, would require a relatively short amendment agreement. Um, and the swap would continue. Um, but the city would live with all aspects of the swap, including the potential for future credit problems requiring that the swap be terminated early and reintroducing some of the issues where we've been discussing today. So that concludes my prepared remarks.
Um, do you have a recommendation on those two options?
Uh, Mayor, but I personally do. Uh, I I believe that option B is in the city's best interest.
Okay. Are there questions from council members? Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. Um, I want to say like, do you know what are the interest rate that we have for each, like for the swaps that we have right now?
I think the B-two, the big one we're talking about is five point six six percent.
Five point six percent and the B-two is five point five or something like that?
They're close. I'm sorry.
And what is?
It's five point five eight. I'm sorry, uh, five point five eight percent, the first, the first one.
Five point five eight.
It's after midnight here, ma'am, so I'm I'm slipping a little bit.
Yeah. And um, do you know, like, do you have an analysis of like how much um we can get, like, what is the interest rate uh based on the financial uh situation that we have um that we can get in the market right now?
You mean for issuing new bonds?
Yes.
To terminate this? Um, we we have, I have run numbers um that are the basis of my um suggesting that it would be more expensive to sell bonds to terminate the swap than to keep the swap. Um. I think our expectation is that what we're looking for from the city, from the council, is a a general sense of um, is there an amount that the the council would be willing to pay to simplify moving forward and essentially not have the swap? So when I say more expensive, it would, I think, the only reasonable of of the various alternatives other than option B, so the the least expensive option A, about three and a half million dollars. And so I I think we understand, we being staff as well as myself and and Joe, that you would need an extensive analysis detailed where these numbers come from. What I mean by more expensive, I think there's no expectation that you'd be making any final decisions based on what we, simple thing we put in front of you tonight. Um, but there, I think, a question of a residual concern about swaps. Um, and would that prevent you from considering option B? So that that's really the level here. So to answer your question, it would be three and a half percent, something like that?
Probably closer to four.
Four, Joe?
Three and a half to four percent, but but the relationship, i- it's not a s- it's not a simple matter of five point five eight versus four. Um, it it's more, it's it's more complicated.
Yeah, I know. I I think like you are asking us to uh make choices tonight and reminded you about two options, but I don't see the analysis. I don't see, uh, I think like what uh, what I am asking is like, okay, in in option A, wha- what what are the city could get and and just kind of like have an analysis of like
Yeah.
Right now, that, and then in option, because if not, it's just kind of like we are making decision out of nothing really here, right?
Yeah, no, ma'am. I I don't actually um suggest that the the council make a decision tonight or or direction. I think the question that I think your financing team, including staff, would like some feedback on there there have been um has has been a less than positive experience, I think, based on some misunderstandings um about the swaps in the past. And if there is a preference at the council to terminate this swap despite a higher cost, then that gives us guidance in coming back to you with options in detail with relative cost. But if the city, if the council is not interested in option B, in living with this, with the swap and trying to renegotiate with the swap counterparty to retain it until twenty thirty-four, then we don't want to go down that road and bring it to you. So
Well, I I think for me.
Feedback we're looking for.
I I I think like it it's really difficult that we can give you a feedback without having actual numbers and actual comparison, right? Like, it's it's just difficult, like
Sure.
You you are now presenting as with kind of like, with option A, if we go to the market based on the the interest rate that we can actually currently have, these are the the things that we can have, or or an option B compared to option B, this is that like, and 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 I, it's just kind of like difficult for me. You know that swaps and all this thing is different, difficult. And 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 one one thing that you don't mention in your presentation is that, like, and and you correct me if I am wrong, but uh when you enter in a fixed rate, uh, you cannot refinance in ten years. And when you have variable fixed rate, you can refinance in thirty, in thirty days. But when you enter in a swap, which is synthetic, synthetic rate, um, is difficult to refinance that. And then it's a lot of cost with the termination fees. So I I I think like, we also want to have uh the answer of the questions that uh council member Martinez asked like that uh at the city council about a month ago for an analysis of what each of the swap has caused the city compared to alternative auction that were available at that time. Has financing staff started that analysis? Is no, why not? If so, when can council expect that final analysis? Because if you are, you are asking us to terminate swap or not, is not based on on kind of like, in, we need to have the data. We need to have, like, so, so I just I just want to make sure that we have the data before we direct you and I, and we know that this is an urgent matter. Because we can no, we can no way until the time comes when the city needs to start paying that uh to to kind of like roll a little bit and say like, oh, we need, we need to do it. And I think like it's really responsible and I appreciate the city staff and you come here tonight. Um, but the reality is that there is a lot of more information that we we need to 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 have in order for us to make that decision and direct, so.
I completely understand and 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 agree with everything you just said. I think we understood that there were questions at a recent city council meeting that were um not able to be answered in that immediate context and that this presentation about the history of the swaps and the bonds uh was going to be made. And we tried to take advantage of that opportunity to bring to council's attention that we need to deal with this twenty twenty-three uh thing. So I think
The question hasn't been answered, so.
Yeah. So it does deserve, it it requires a much more exhaustive analysis. And I think that would be the, that's the expectation, and we'd come back to you with much more detail. But it was really, you know, we're going to be talking about swaps and in particular, we wanted to bring to the council's attention that this twenty twenty-three is going to be here sooner than we think, and we think this requires some attention and action uh sooner than that. So I I think that's uh, that's really what we're trying to do with this last page or two in in addition to answering the general questions that were um posed to staff i- in the more recent uh, in the recent city council meeting. So it, this is half-baked, but it it's really, it never was intended to be fully baked. We're really just trying to get it to your attention, maybe get some initial feedback. Uh, in particular, um, if there is a a sense that option B is somehow not attracted to the city, even if it is less expensive. And obviously, you need to know how much less expensive and in detail. I understand.
No, I I I think like, I appreciate you, I, but but I think like, if if today the motion is that direct uh uh the staff to go on uh option A or option B. So you, the staff and you are asking us to make that decision with half-baked information. So I I I really appreciate that if we can have that information fully, so we can say, well, actually, we don't want swaps or actually swaps are good. Um, and I and I think this is the process, uh, the transparency that you mentioned that we want um to to may, for us to be able to have that um, to direct and and have that both today to uh um, to direct staff to go in in either option A or option B, but it's a half-baked. So we can no go in a direction with a half-baked uh information.
Yeah, understandable. Again, I would rephrase the, you know, kind of goal here was to obtain some feedback um on the council's general position. um, on the council's general position and openness to option B, but not to be directed, you know, with finality uh, to either one.
Uh, Councilor Martinez and then Councilor Willis.
Uh, yes, um, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Majors. Um, uh, are the, are you the financial advisor or the swap advisor?
Uh, the swap advisor.
The swap advisor, okay. So um, a month ago, I did uh, request the, the staff to uh, provide a uh, analysis of each swap with the cost um, to the city compared to alternative options and um, that were available at the time. So um, I would imagine that as the swap advisor, you would be working with staff on this? Did staff ask you for any information concerning this?
Uh, the request was not phrased in that way, sir, no.
So how was it phrased?
Um, there was no mention of that particular request.
Okay, so, so.
The retrospect, the retrospective evaluation of past swap, swaps and how they were used and cost versus alternatives, that.
Okay, so.
That request was not made.
Uh, so then, my question would go to staff. Um, uh, were you planning on doing this analysis uh, on your own and have you started? How far are you with the analysis?
No, we have to work with um, both Joe and George Majors on that.
But you haven't asked them.
So, so that was an error on my part. Uh, what I had asked them for is what they uh, submitted in this document. And I had asked them for um, um, the savings that we've had with doing the refundings
Mm-hmm.
and how much it has saved the city. So it was my part, I overlooked that other part of the question. So we'll get that back to you.
Uh, and, and actually, he hasn't explained to us how much uh, is going to be saved. So um, uh, Mr. Majors, uh, are you uh, uh, able to, to give an estimate of how much uh, is going to be saved?
In option B.
Yes, in option B.
Um, well, yeah, there are variations on within the categories of, of A and B.
Mm-hmm.
Um, at a minimum, if you wait until 2023 to sell bonds to pay just the termination payment, which would leave the existing bonds variable, which is not something the city uh, up till now has indicated an interest in doing. Uh, that could be as little as $2 million in incremental cost. Um, if you want to address this now in option A, meaning selling bonds, you know, now, so that we don't incur the risk of poor market conditions or any deterioration in the city's credit or RBC's unwillingness to negotiate with us in 2023, uh, my estimate on that one is 3.5 million. And then structures which would involve using fixed rate bonds, not only to terminate the swap and pay that payment, but to refinance the 127 million dollars of variable rate bonds. Um, that will be outstanding beginning August, paying current interest August 1st of 2023 is 18 million dollars, present value, 27 million dollars gross. I know that sounds like a big difference, but in that case, you're, you're taking your floating rate bonds, you have outstanding now, which are very favorable. And if you want to get rid of those and make them simple into fixed rate bonds, there's going to be a very significant market cost to doing that.
Okay, well, um, something that um, you know, the, the, uh, let me ask you this, is, is the playing field with swap swaps uh, equal between corporations and municipalities?
Yes.
It is, so.
Yeah.
So, so, so corporations, you know, have termination fees if they don't uh.
Yes, absolutely, and, and I, I would stress the concept of the termination, a termination payment is simply a make-whole. So for example, I don't know if you, if you purchased the United States Treasury bond at 5% a few years ago and interest rates went down, if you tried to sell that to someone else, you paid a hundred dollars for it, they'd pay a hundred and twenty dollars to you for it, right? Because it's as a 5% interest rate, rates go down to 3%, that's an above-market rate. So that is now worth more than it, you know, you paid for it. And that's the concept here, is that you entered into a swap paying 5.66 at the time in 2005, 2006. That was the market at the time, interest rates could have gone up or down from there, as it turns out, due to the financial crisis and now again with COVID, interest rates have fallen and, and stayed low. So the city agreed to pay you know, 5.6%. The current market rate is 1%. And so the termination payment, it's not a fee and it's not a penalty, it's simply a make-whole, right? Of you paying the value of the contract. If rates had gone higher, the counterparty would be paying you, and it's not so much a fee or any sort of penalty. It's simply a make-whole, because when the swap goes away, now you only have to pay 1% instead of the five and a half percent. So i- i- in that sense, yes, corporations pay termination payments and they pay them in both directions. And any counterparty would enter into a swap with you, they would pay 3% or receive 3% in the same market condition. So very transparent, accessible pricing.
So, so corporations make 30-year uh, bonds?
Not as commonly, no, um, corporations, cities, as Joe pointed out, want to have fixed rate, long-term financings for the spreading generational um, cost out. Most corporations finance much shorter term. Uh, sometimes, although in recent years, rates have been sold, though, they have gone out past 10 years, 10, 15, even 20 years, but that's rare. You know, most of their medium-term notes out to 10 years, but most financing is done variable rate.
Yeah, well, in, in your analogy, um, uh, where you were using bonds, you know, um, uh, people aren't forced to sell their bonds. So that, that's, that, that's a, that's a major difference.
That, that's the, that's the downgrade.
Right, and so and, and cities actually have no control over bond ratings. I, I mean, o- o- over financial ratings from, from uh, uh, in, in fact, in, in fact, the, the last time that we had a bond, that last time we had a downgrade, it was contested by the city. And and I believe that they changed the rate, but, but the penalties for the downgrading did not go away. And uh, and, and, and the other question, so, so you're saying that, that with the um, with the termination fee, uh, we're actually not paying anything extra. We're, we're paying exactly what we would have paid if we had of um, uh, gone through the process uh, the way it was intended to go.
I, I'm not 100% sure I understand your question, but yes, in the sense that if you're relieved of the obligation to pay 5.66%, so I give you cash of 33.5 million and now I just pay 1%, those two things are very similar, they're not identical because you incurred financing costs to come up with the 33.5 million dollar payment. But if you could borrow money at a particular rate, we'll call it, it's called LIBOR flat, which you can't, no corporation can. If you could borrow money that cheaply, then there would be no difference between paying 5.665% from 2023 to 2034 and paying 33.5 million dollars in cash today and then paying 1% for those 11 years. Those would be, the present value of those two cash flows would be the same.
And so the major drawback would be the in, the inability to refinance during those 30 years.
Uh, yes.
And that's a major, I, I mean, just, just think, if we were able to refinance this year, uh, we could save uh, a lot of money that we can't save because we can't refinance.
That was true of the uh, Civic Center um, redevelopment agency. Um, and what was the third, and the wastewater system swaps?
Mm-hmm.
This is a particular set of circumstances is, is different. If you're, are you familiar with the 2005 bonds and what they were, how they were structured?
Um, the 2005 or 2007?
2005 pension obligation bond. So they were sold as we call zero coupon bonds, so, so 50 million dollars worth of, you know, got 50 million dollars today, but they didn't pay any interest. It was zero coupon, the B, series B, one until 2013. So you had 50 million dollars, they accreted. So all of the interest due to bondholders just compounded until they mature in their final maturity value. And then they became current interest bonds. So they were never callable in the first place. These are taxable bonds in the taxable market where there is no um, standard call provision, right? In the municipal market, tax exempt bonds, that was one of the calculations when we were saying, should we do fixed or synthetic fixed? Is what was the value of that call option? And, you know, that, that assessment is made at the time. But these never had that in the taxable bonds. And going forward, these would only be from 2023 to 2034 anyway. And that, so that's only 10 or 11 years, there are not 30-year bonds left. So if we look at 2023 and the question being, do we keep the swap or not? It's not relevant here because it's a taxable market, there wouldn't be a call anyway, and we're only talking about 11 years left. But you're completely correct in all of those tax exempt situations in evaluating whether or not you should entertain synthetic fixed is that you're giving up that 10-year call.
So you mentioned the 2005 bond, uh, were you the uh, swap advisor in that swap?
In these, these swaps that began in 2006?
The 2005 swap.
Well, they're two, they, the swaps were entered into in 2006, a year later.
Mm-hmm.
Bonds were issued in 2005 and uh, it took a year to do the swaps.
Uh-huh, and, and you were instrumental in that?
I was, sir, yeah.
Okay, and uh, do you know who the financial advisor was?
Jean Buckley.
Jean Buckley?
Tamel, I never knew how to pronounce this, Tamel Pass?
Tamel Pass. Tamel Pass.
Tamel Pius?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe she was the city's finance, uh, financial advisor for many years, 20 years? Like, I can't quote that, but I go back 30 years and Jean was there before I was in 1990, so.
Right, okay, so um, uh, I, I guess my question goes back to staff and well, well, to everyone. Uh, when do you think the council will have a chance to see the analysis that I asked for a month ago?
My turnaround time wouldn't be that long. I mean, I, it's not that difficult an analysis, so.
Okay, we come back on the 23rd.
Certainly, that, that timing's easy, yeah, sure.
Okay, um, I, I may have questions later, but uh.
Councilmember Martinez, can I ask a question? This is Joe Mortensen from FAG.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I just want to be very clear, are you asking for what, you're asking for what the swaps, what we paid on the swaps versus what would have been available had we not used swaps, like for standard conventional fixed rate bonds, correct?
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah, a, 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 all options, and, and I'd like to see the underlying data for, for all of that.
Right.
All right, so uh, just to, just to be clear, the um, so you want to compare, you don't want to see the analysis at the time that led us to conclude that it looked attractive to use the synthetic fix?
I think that's what they want.
That is what you want, or you want?
I want to know what the analysis was, right? At the time.
Yeah.
You entered into the swap that told you it was an appropriate thing to do, is that?
Right, uh-huh, yeah, and, and, and I want variable rates to, to also be considered, I, I want all the options, you know, um, uh, because it really helps me to understand how you think about uh, all of these financial issues. You know, I, I'm, I'm a, I'm a neophyte, I'm trying to understand, and the best way to understand is to understand how you think about it. How you make your decision.
Yep, happy to do it.
Okay, great.
Uh, Councilor Willis.
Yeah, um, so I know this is just kind of like a uh, preliminary analysis, so um, in order to come back to us on the 23rd, is there any reason why we couldn't have like a general analysis on the projections on how much a fixed rate, interest rate will cost versus this uh, potential swap? I guess is my first question. Is there any way to just do an analysis on both of them, or is that asking too much?
No, already, already done it, that's what the reference is to the more expensive, but I thought, I think the expectation was, we only had a few minutes in this context, tag, tagging it on to the end of the original request and, and that was, you know, intentionally kept brief and high level.
I, I guess, um, if you can answer this question tonight, I know it's like 1:00 AM for you, but or at tonight or on the 23rd, I guess what I want to know is um, because this is still wrapping my head around these new concepts of the bonds and swaps and fixed rates versus the swap chaotic rate is what it sounds like. But I guess um, if uh, the bond rating on the fluctuating swap is very low right now, I guess a question I have is like, how long do we expect it to stay low, below like what our fixed rate is? Um, um, and I guess getting again clarity, because there was a lot of dates and years thrown around, so getting clarity on how much more time we have in this bond. And also, I guess I would like to know how the swap that we're in current, we're in the swap still currently, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, how did the swap, how many times has the swap been bad for us to where it actually breached what the actual market interest rate is? So I can, you know, have a better idea, like, does it really look like we're taking a huge, huge risk? Or is it maybe a calculated risk here and there? Um, do you have like any preliminary thoughts to some of those questions I asked or in summary?
Well, I, I can take a stab at starting with your, your uh, first question, uh, first, first question about variable interest rates, I'm assuming. Um, no one really knows where rates are going, so I'm not going to try to pretend that I do know.
Fair.
But um, I will say that generally speaking, if you look historically, variable rates turn out to be a good bet for most people who enter into them. Um, just because there is a yield curve and the variable rates are down here on the bottom end of the yield curve and long-term rates are out here. Um, that said, you are going to be continuously experiencing risk associated with those fluctuating interest rates, right? Now, on the one hand, you could say, well, we have reserves and they're earning interest too, so whenever our short-term rates go up, then our, our variable rate, uh, our, our earnings go up, so it helps to kind of offset that, so long as you have enough cash invested. So um, that is uh, that is uh, that is one offsetting factor. But in general, the market for fixed rate bonds is so favorable to issuers that most issuers are, are in, in the municipal space are using fixed rate bonds. Because, you know, for taxable fixed rate bonds, and even for taxable, I mean, you can sell taxable long-term debt for like 3.5%. So most issuers have decided to stay in a fixed rate obligation because it eliminates that risk.
Yeah, no, I mean, hearing that numbers will randomly be generated depending on the circumstances year by year is well, I did not excited about that fact, it's very unpredictable, so that's where my reticence is, was that.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think this question was already asked, but I just pinpoint clear, want to get a definitive answer on this. Is there option C where we can go back to the issuers of the bond and based on market conditions today, negotiate downward a fixed rate that isn't 4%, but maybe in uh, 2.53% range or something like that? Is that at all a possibility?
Well, yeah, I, I, we, the bonds that we currently have, the pension bonds, are really a floating rate bond. So those bondholders agreed back in 2005 to receive LIBOR plus, what is it, 140 basis points?
Yeah.
So those bondholders are just continuing to. So those bondholders are just continuing to collect, you know, LIBOR plus a hundred and forty basis points on on those bonds. And, you know, that spread, that hundred and forty basis points is effectively a credit spread. And, you know, that has already been baked into the bond transaction. So there's really no going back and negotiating a different rate with on those bonds. The only way really to access lower rates is to refinance those bonds. Now, the problem is those bonds aren't callable until twenty twenty-three. So in order to refinance them, then you have to create this escrow and there it's a very costly process. So it's one of it's one of the reasons why we can't just compare today's rate to the rate on the swap and say that difference is savings, because there are other factors that go into how you achieve that kind of a refinancing that that affect the economics.
One, one.
For the sake, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I think it's important is that the last time we went through this analysis of synthetic fix versus traditional fix and opted for the synthetic fix was two thousand and eight. Right, this, you know, ever since then, then the financial crisis occurred and all the, so we the current market, no one is talking about doing any new swaps. Um, we had them, we had difficulties with the underlying variable rate bonds through the financial crisis. We had downgrade and we've managed them and as Joe described opportunistically, when interest rates were favorable, refinanced the related bonds and the swaps. And in fact, you know, through two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten, um, the swap counterparties, particular RBC lent the money that we owed them to the city in the form of just, hey, they pay us over time, which is not really much different than we're talking about here. So, you know, the idea that anyone is suggesting that we should be looking at new ones, that's, that's not really on the table. What we're talking about is, though, we already have this one.
And we're going right out this way, basically, with the one week.
Yeah, and and we already owe thirty-three and a half million dollars. And the underlying bonds are different than other variable rate bonds. Joe said, these are what we call floating rate notes. So we don't have to remarket them every week. And there's no letter of credit that we have to renew or anything like that. The bondholders are committed, right? And they they can't put the bonds back to us. Right? They they're stuck with them until twenty thirty-four at this LIBOR plus one forty. The swap, you receive LIBOR. So those two match perfectly. And we don't have any risks related to the bonds that we do in some other synthetic fixed rate structures. So like the B one bonds, which started in twenty thirteen, they've worked absolutely perfectly, right? We received LIBOR, we pay LIBOR plus one forty on the bonds, and we pay the fixed rate. So five sixty becomes, you know, seven percent. And then we have a fixed rate at seven percent non-callable, and that's it. That's the deal. And sure, rates are lower today than they were then, but seven percent was, you know, kind of the market back in two thousand and six. I mean, it just. Yeah, so that, you know, that's kind of it. So what we're facing now, that when I referred to rates being low and the existing bonds being attractive, I was talking about the one forty, right? That, this instrument, you could never find new investors to buy the bonds that the existing bondholders have. That is, you can't sell a eleven-year floating rate note two years forward, just could never do it. So in that sense, these underlying floating rate bonds that we have, I mean, if if it really turned out in a year or two that the market was such that we could issue something better, well, then absolutely do that and refinance them. You can do that in twenty twenty-three. But as of right now, they're better than market. They're attractive rates. And the the swap, the fact that it has the rate it has is a function of market conditions in two thousand and six. And, you know, we just, that's the contract, the deal we made. And at the time, you think about, you know, the idea of funding the pension obligation, there was the, there was the thought that, well, you know, we borrow this money and pay back this interest rate and, you know, make that contribution to the pension fund, and that earns a certain percentage. And then in the meantime, we get this budgetary relief rather than having to pile, you know, revenues in in out of cash flow into, um, the pension obligation. That was a decision made at the time. And they thought, well, this, you know, maybe it'll earn more than seven percent. You know, in in the equity funds and things like that. So that was the time. So this is really just, you know, a two thousand and five, two thousand and six decision under then-current market conditions, and it actually worked exactly the way it was supposed to work.
Okay, I guess, um, yeah, in the conclusion, and then if you can answer the last question at the end of my conclusion, that'd be great. If not, we can end for the sake of time on my end. Uh, I guess, um, what you're saying makes sense in terms like the swap sounds like a better deal because of where the market conditions are right now. I guess what would just help me out more is just kind of understanding how many times since two thousand and five in this fifteen, sixteen-year period, did it really not work out for us in a way that we want to because our bond rating got and that lowered, and how much money did we end up spending out versus if we're at an actual market value? Because of that shows like a good like fifteen-year trend that we were below market more times than we were above, then it might just net out either way it goes, depending on what happens over the course of the next. What would this ends in thirty-four? So, you know, thirteen years. Um, and yeah, so I guess, uh, so I just want to get some of that information out. The swap preliminarily sounds like the better choice from what I'm hearing and just thinking about the pandemic and how that has an impact on the economy and in the future. But if there is a, it doesn't sound like there is, but just because you said in your comments, if there is a way to renegotiate our rates, like if we make a decision on this today, does that prevent us from having a feasible conversation about this in the future? If it seems like there's a better realistic deal out there?
No, not at all.
If we make this decision later on?
No, not at all. You take, you take option B now and you get out to twenty twenty-three and there's a better option, terminate the swap then. We're going to get back from RBC at least half, I'll say half of this rate increase, but we take that into consideration if at the time something's better. But it it takes away the risk that, you know, we don't have a as favorable a set of conditions in twenty-three. We just put this to to bed today, tell the rating agencies we have this addressed, you know, there's no uh, thirty-three million dollar, you know, liquidity event in twenty twenty-three, and we're saying, oh, yeah, yeah, we'll be fine. We'll get out there and we'll issue some bonds. I mean, you know, I I I, there's a comfort that comes with getting rid of this this thirty-three point five million dollar obligation now if we can negotiate reasonable terms with with RBC. And then you can always get rid of the swap voluntarily.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. I'll end my questioning. Thank you.
Councilor McLaughlin?
Yes, I just have a a comment and one quick question. So, um, first of all, I also want a, um, a cost analysis to really understand whether option A or option B makes more sense. Um, I remember vividly, I believe it was twenty fifteen, when we had to pay that huge termination fee on, um, on, I guess it was the swap related to Civic Center. Um, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. I remember. And how much was that? That termination fee?
I, I want to say it was somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty twenty-five million. I'm I'm estimating that's around the amount. It was two swaps that we terminated in exchange for RBC taking on the pension swaps, which were really the problem. But we were able to come up with a more cost-efficient solution by transferring one swap over and terminating the the others.
Right, right. Yes, it may have been more like twenty-eight million. It was a huge amount. And I remember the shock that that sent through us as council members at the time. So that's a big.
McLaughlin, I I I should, you know, kind of clarify that of that twenty-eight million, if you recall, when I spent some time with you one-on-one and and several of the other members here in on the council in twenty fourteen. Um, that payment, I don't recall what it ultimately was, twenty-five, twenty-eight, something like that. Um, started out as, um, a transaction in twenty fourteen that in which RBC paid the city nine and a half million dollars. If you're recalling, you know, this, this transaction, um, we called it the Swaption, right, where we were capturing the savings that the then-current market afforded for refunding those Civic Center bonds. And then interest rates fell from there. So the city realized greater savings when it did refund the Civic Center bonds because rates fell. And that was really what the relationship was, and the termination payment was related to the savings on the Civic Center bond. So that was, it certainly was not a twenty-eight million dollar loss on the, on the part of the city.
It was a, it was a big, um, big hit that that we had to deal with. Um, and I don't want to have to deal with it. So I have, I just want to have a cost analysis and, um, understand uh, the actual numbers so that we can make an informed decision. Um, but my quick question is, um, who was the bond council going back to twenty oh five?
Uh, to my knowledge, it's always been Ora Harrington and Suckler.
That's correct.
So John Knox was with.
Yes.
Okay, just trying to refresh my memory. Okay, thank you. And you, will you bring us that cost analysis, um, of the two options by the? I forget what the next, um, regular council meeting is or what?
The twenty-third.
It's the twenty-third that we're.
We're talking about March, May third.
Okay, is that, is that doable?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Bates?
Well, I recall being involved in a number of swaps. And whereas they were beneficial at the time, um, this council is going to have to fish or cut bait. Because you can't keep going down the road with what you might call deferred payment. And all of a sudden, three, five years, bingo, they want thirty-five or forty million dollars or whatever. And, um, I'd like to get some response from our bond councils. How do we maneuverize self to get away from, um, borrowing money with, uh, deferred payments?
Well, I mean, I, you know, Joe, feel free to weigh in, but, um, I I I think that the city, uh, always has the decision uh, about when it chooses to pay, uh, for the debt, um, that it incurs. And the city council is always in a position where it needs to balance short-term cash flow uh, issues, um, with the desire to, against the desire to repay the debt sooner. And, you know, we as your financing team try to present you with, um, a set of options, um, but it's ultimately the city council's decision um, as to what the appropriate, um, balance there is. And so.
Well, well, we've had situations where, uh, us taxes from the county were not forwarded at a time and manner. And we utilize, uh, some of this swap money. But once we get the taxes, why aren't we capable, uh, should be concerned about replenishing what we took out of the swap for, say, payroll, uh, continually our general fund obligation? And any other obligation that we may have? Why do we get the swap? And we use it as we so desire, but when we get the revenue, we don't put it back. Like, if we get thirty-five million dollars, I'm sure we put it in an investment. Why cannot that part of that investment, at least the interest that approved, be applied and set aside, uh, to help pay back the swap?
Uh, Councilmember Bates, I'll take a stab at at answering this question. Um, you know, the primary answer is that these swaps are, when you enter, enter, when you're, and I'm sorry, I'm late hour, I can't even speak. When you entered into them, you didn't enter into them planning to have to pay a termination payment. In fact, I would go so far as to say you assume you never would have to.
Yes.
Right? Um, and that was based on the expectation that you would be able to maintain a good credit rating, and then the swap, as as George mentioned, would just continue to perform exactly as it was expected to perform. But when certain events occur, such as the really rapid deterioration in the, in the city's credit ratings in twenty fifteen, that caused all of these cascading events to occur with the swap because the credit rating fell below, the Moody's credit rating fell below a rating threshold that permitted that swap counterparty to terminate the swap. That's when the problems began. So there.
But and, but in the good, but that was in a crisis bad time. We're no longer, I would think, in a crisis, yet we're continuing to do the swap program.
Right. And 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 the reason why, you know, we're faced with this again is that in order to fix the crisis in twenty fifteen, um, the city had to agree to some terms with this new counterparty, RBC, who took on the pension swaps that used to be in the hands of JP Morgan. Um, and so they were willing to take that swap and modify the terms so that the rating threshold was lowered so that you're further away from that happening again. Um, and then, but but the, one of the conditions they had was that they wanted to be able to terminate the swap in in twenty twenty-three. So that was kind of the the horse trade the city had to make in order to, you know, to bring RBC to the table to help, you know, resolve the the problem that we had with the additional termination event. So under normal circumstances, you wouldn't have, you know, these, you know, little time bombs sitting, sitting there, but but these were structures that had to be put into place in order to cure a, you know, a big problem that the city was faced with in twenty fifteen. And certainly, if the city had thirty-three million dollars, you could terminate the swap today and walk away and have just variable rate bonds. But the problem is, there's usually not that much money sitting around.
Did you get your question answered?
Yes, the best of, uh, I can expect. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go to Vice Mayor Johnson.
Well, first, I'd like to thank, um, Linda, George and Joe for their present, for their very detailed presentation, as well as, um, my colleagues for helping to contextualize some of the early two thousand history um, around this situation. But I just wanted to, um, express my interest in option B. Um, however, I don't see any harm in doing the financial analysis, so I do also look forward to receiving that before making the final decision. So I just wanted to offer that because I know you were looking to get the councils, um, you know, see how the council was feeling about that. So I just wanted to offer that.
Thank you. So it sounds like we're not going to resolve this tonight. It's going to come back to us on the twenty-third. So, uh, maybe we can move on. It's almost ten thirty and we've got, uh, we've got several more important, uh, several other important items to get to.
We have one speaker.
If I may?
Oh, yeah, we have, how many public speakers do we have?
We have one speaker.
So you have any, you all have any problems moving on?
I I'd like to, uh, I'd like to make sure that my request is is understood.
I I think they heard it.
Well, uh, well, I want to make sure that he did. And 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 my, and my request is that, uh, uh, I'm asking about, uh, costing all the options from two thousand and six until now. Uh, and 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 this includes, uh, the the fixed, uh, the the fixed loans that we've had, you know, because I know that most of the loans that we have are fixed. And, you know, question is, uh, did the fixed loan, loans save more money than the swap? Uh, including all the fees, the the termination fees. And I also want to say that, uh, that variable rates are like playing the market. And, uh, the swap uh, bonds are like playing the market with your arm tied behind your back because you can't, you 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 can't, you can't do anything except take the punches as they come. Like the termination fees, we have no control over what happens. And even the mayor and the city ma, the city manager at the time argue that the, that the, uh, that the bond, um, uh, down, that that the cities. uh, down, the, 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 the city's downgrade was, was, was not a proper downgrade, but we have no control of it.
Well, you got that right. Okay, so let's, let's move on to the next item. Let's hear it from the public speaker first.
Okay.
Just for, the speaker is Lisa Cody. Lisa, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start. Lisa?
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so let's just be clear that most municipalities who entered into swaps in the early 2005s, 2006, all lost out on the deal. Whether they achieved a synthetic fixed rate is questionable. In this case, the city's B1 pension bond is paid at above 7% right now. So the LIBOR rate that's paid to the city um, is not matching the SIFMA rate that's being paid to the bondholders, or you'd be paying a synthetic fixed rate of approximately 5%, not 7%. The termination fees that have occurred over the history in Richmond are a result of the fact that there is risk with these products. They're complex derivatives. And nobody in the corporate world enters into a 30-year swap. They do five to seven-year swaps. They never do 30 because it's too risky. And the banks know that they're gonna win on the end of this, all of the banks, or they wouldn't enter into these deals. Lots of things can go wrong. In the city of Richmond, you've seen a demonstration of the number of things that have gone wrong. You got downgraded. Therefore, when you were downgraded, you basically have been forced to pay termination fees. You've also ha- lost so money, so much money on some of these that you probably elected to pay a termination fee that was cheaper than actually keeping the bond set as it is. So in terms of the option of A versus B, number one, there is no analysis. I've actually never seen in any municipality a financial advisor that comes to the city or any finance team that doesn't provide a financial analysis of the cost alternatives the first time it comes out. Number two, why would um, why would the bank offer to um, give a better deal to the city than they, than, it's, it's, it's a conflict of interest, let's put it that way. For the very same bank that you're paying um, the termination fee to offer you an interest rate to basically pay that loan, um, one must consider that a conflict of interest. That's what I'm gonna say.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's, let's move to um, item H3, please, Madam Laura.
We're moving to item H3. Anyone that would like to speak on the side of please raise your hand now by pressing the raise hand button. You're commenting by phone, press the star and then the number nine key. Just where we, please repeat this, these instructions, this Spanish, please.
Yeah. Si desea dar comentarios sobre el tema de la agenda H3, por favor levante su mano ahora. Para comentar por computadora, seleccione la opción de participante en la parte de abajo de su pantalla y seleccione la opción que dice raise hand para levantar su mano. Para comentar por teléfono o prima estrella nueve. Gracias.
Item H3, authorize the city manager to fill four public works positions and the deputy fire chief positions that were frozen as part of the fiscal year 2020 through 2021 budget process. Right now, we have one hand raised.
Okay, staff report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Bud and city council members. My name is LaShonda White, Deputy City Manager, and I have a brief presentation um, tonight. KCRT, can you please pull up the presentation? Thank you so much. Um, so um, tonight, um, we are coming before council to request that we can, uh, for the city manager to have the authority to fill um, five positions that were frozen during the fiscal year 2021 budget development process. So as part of that process, city council made a decision to disallow hiring into numerous vacant positions within various departments based on what vacancies existed at that specific moment in time. Um, it was very clear during that process that the reason for that decision was because council was trying to reduce expenditures. We had a 29.5 million dollar deficit that we needed to address. Um, we wanted to preserve the field positions um, and thereby avoid layoffs. Uh, during those council meetings, however, city staff did try to explain that arbitrarily holding certain positions open without sufficient departmental input would have negative effects on both internal and external, external service delivery. So after eight months of operating with many of these vacancies, the city manager is requesting to fill uh, five total positions. Next slide, please. So um, the five positions are within public works and within the fire department. So um, as part of the fiscal year 2021 budget, there were um, almost 60 positions that were frozen. And within public works, there were 15 that were frozen. They are described here in terms of the position as well as a number of um, FTEs within each of those classifications. And then for fire, there were two positions that were frozen. Um, and so tonight, um, we are focusing on five positions, four within public works and one within fire. Next slide, please. So here are the positions that were included in the um, agenda report. We have the four in public works and this, um, this list came from discussion with interim public works director and he had conversations with his staff in terms of um, which positions would really be beneficial to the community and to department staff to be able to unfreeze at this time. So the five positions are groundskeepers, equipment operator, parks, construction and maintenance worker, and electrician. Um, the costs, the annual costs um, are included here as well as uh, and this includes both salary and benefits. Um, and there are some assumptions built in in terms of um, this is at step three. Or this is a step one of each of these classifications with a benefit assumption of about 60%. And then we, for fiscal year 2021, because we have to build in some time if they're unfrozen to be able to fill those positions. So we're estimating three months of salary and benefits for these positions within the current fiscal year. So that's where those numbers for 2021 um, come into play. The numbers that were included in the staff report um, were a little lower only because there was um, the electrician that is listed here was mistakenly listed as a maintenance worker 12. So there was a slight difference in the cost there. Uh, but this is the, the annual cost for these four positions requested by public works as well as um, the cost for the current fiscal year if we were to hire within the current fiscal year. For fire, um, the request is for a deputy fire chief position to be unfrozen and that is the 280 is the annual cost. That is the, using the assumption at step three for that position with a 70% benefit load. And then the 70,000 is three months of salary and benefits. And in the staff report itself, there is um, justification from both interim uh, fire chief, Brian Kelly, as well as interim um, public works director, Tofi Colby, around the rationale for unfreezing these positions and the impact that it would have, not only on the community but on staff. Next slide. That concludes my presentation. Once again, um, what we are asking for is authorization for the city manager to fill four public works positions and the deputy fire chief positions that were frozen as part of the fiscal year 2021 budget process. And I do have interim chief Brian Kelly, fire chief Brian Kelly on the uh, is at this meeting as well as interim public works director, Tofi Colby, in case there's any questions from the council. Thank you.
Okay, questions from council members? Uh, I see hands up for both Jimenez and McLaughlin. Are you, you, put your, put your hand down.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, Councilor McLaughlin, you have a question?
I apologize, mine was up from before as well.
Okay, any other, any other questions? Anybody? Councilor Martinez?
Yeah, um, uh, the so these, these positions were frozen to save money. So my question is, where is the money coming from to, to fill these positions?
That is a great question. So in the staff report, what we um, are, are hoping that will, will, will occur this fiscal year. And once again, we're estimating that if they are unfrozen now and there is a recruitment process, that definitely takes time. So we're estimating this three months of cost. So um, we're hoping that budgeted savings within the department and just citywide in terms of our operating budget will cover the cost by the end of the fiscal year. For next fiscal year, the departments will have to request as we always do as part of the budget development process for 2122, these positions within the budget. So they'll show up when the budget is presented to city council for 2022, 2122.
Okay, well, the, it, it sounds as, uh, it sounds as if we're paying it with, with hopes as opposed to actual monies. Uh, is, is, is that a way to uh, uh, have a balanced budget? I don't think so.
Um, I, I can understand your concerns. I know we did during mid-year present to city council um, that at mid-year and as we are projecting for the rest of the fiscal year, that without a lot of the accommodation, accommodations and other considerations that we need to keep in mind that were built into the fiscal year 2021 budget process, um, that at the end of the year, we still could end with a um, with a surplus. And so with that, we are um, also believing that we will have sufficient funding and budgeted savings throughout um, at the end of this fiscal year to cover the cost of these current positions.
Okay, uh, uh, I, I, I realize the importance of, of the, of the positions. Uh, you know, you can go to uh, any park and see that uh, or, or walk down any sidewalk and know that there's a lot of work to be done in the city of Richmond. So, so I do understand the importance of these jobs, you know, but at the same time, uh, the question always arises, where does the money come from? Anyway, that's.
So I, I have a similar question. This term budgeted savings. Uh, wh- what exactly is a budgeted savings? Is, is, isn't it more like a, isn't it more like an anticipated surplus or something like that?
I, I, I will ask if Belinda wants to uh, chime in on this, but uh, Mayor Bud, I would think that it's very similar to that. Now, we are anticipating, as we showed um, during the mid-year budget report, that we're anticipating um, a surplus at the end of the fiscal year. And so we are counting on, looking at, as we analyze all of our different um, departments um, within the general fund, that there will be some savings. So that's the, you know, as budget, some budgeted savings um, within those departments. And this is just for general fund.
Okay, uh, any other questions from council members? Uh, we have public speakers?
We, right now, we have one speaker.
Okay. Call this, please.
Public speaker is Naomi Williams. Naomi, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Can you? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, since it's only me speaking, can I have all the rest of the time that's there? No, I guess not. Um, I, I see that you're gonna hire four public works positions, which we truly need. And we need them now because in, I hope that at least two of them will be on the abatement department. Are they? And then again, we need the deputy city, the deputy fire chief. One chief can't do everything. It's just like the city manager, she can't do all those things that she had to do if she didn't have any help. So from my side of the fence, which I live on the south side, we see trash that's increasing. There's parked abandoned cars over here on, well, the trash is on almost every street. And the abandoned cars is round and I reported them, but they're still there because you don't have enough staff to come and see about them. And you know, I live in Pullman. So Pullman gets a little of everything all over. So I thi- I hope you approve the, her to hire the four public workers. And I hope two of them go in abatement and then hire the deputy fire chief, which would be a great help to her as well.
Thank you. Yep.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Willis.
My second.
Second by Jimenez. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Bates?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
And Mayor Bud?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to uh, next item, please.
We're moving to item I1. Anyone that would like to speak on the side of please raise your hand. See if you're joining us by video, press the raise hand button. If you're joining us by phone, press the star and the number nine. And then we'll let you just repeat the instructions.
Si desea dar comentarios sobre el tema de la agenda I1, por favor levante su mano ahora. Para comentar por computadora, seleccione la opción de participante en la parte de abajo de su pantalla y seleccione la opción que dice raise hand para levantar su mano. Para comentar por teléfono o prima estrella nueve. Gracias.
Item I1 is to introduce an ordinance for first reading to revise the wages salary compensation for the fire chief.
Hi Pam, I'm gonna make the presentation, Mr. Mayor. If I can be, can I proceed? Okay. Hey, let me show my screen. My name is Anil Camello. I'm the Human Resources Director. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Member of City Council. This propos- this uh, staff report is a first of two readings designed to seek approval of a new salary range for the fire chief position. Staff is proposing an increase of about 4.4%, which will take the salary from its current 2,000, 225,420 to 235,680. Staff conducted a survey of nine cities and found that the top salary for the fire chief averaged at 256,000. As I mentioned, the current top is, for the city of Richmond is 225. It also happens to be lower than the current range, top range of the assistant police chief. Our proposal will essentially take uh, the fire chief position to the same range as the assistant police chief and make it 235,680. Again, an increase of 4.4%. With that, I'll let you have any questions you may have.
Uh, any questions from council members? I see your hand up, uh, Councilor Martinez. Is that a mistake or do you wish to speak?
Yeah, uh, it, it was a mistake, but I do wish to speak. Um, no, I, 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 I think in, in this time of uh, of budget crises and balancing the budget, w- we need to um, uh, be as uh, you know, uh, uh, I, I know these people get a lot of money for their job and, you know, uh, who's to say that they don't deserve it? But uh, there's a lot of other people who make far less and uh, who's to say they don't deserve a raise? So, so I, I, I really do think that uh, um, the, the, what we've paid the, the uh, our, our uh, officers, um, our, our leaders i- is, is adequate. And I don't really see a need for, for the increase. In fact, I'd like to see a decrease of uh, all of our officers. Uh, I think I've mentioned that to uh, uh, the city manager and to our uh, uh, of, of human resources, you know.
City coun- city council?
Yeah, well, w- we actually uh, took a cut in our budget in, in order to balance the uh, balance the rate. But, but if I was making as much as, as a city manager or, or anyone else at the top, I, I would, I would definitely uh, consider taking a pay cut in order to balance the budget.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council members? Uh, do we have any public speakers?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make one more point, and that is uh, we are about to start a recruitment and I sure, I was remiss.
we are about to start a recruitment and I sure, I was remiss, if I'd be remiss if I didn't say that the recruiter that we have selected advised us to raise our salary in order for us to be competitive in the market. So it is a factor in recruiting talent to the city.
Okay, um, so.
Can we stop sharing?
Oh, certainly.
Okay.
There's a public speaker?
Um, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, uh, Councilor McLaughlin?
Yes, um, you know, um, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with what, uh, council member Martinez says beca- said because we are, um, at a point where we need to give raises to our rank and file, public workers, public service workers, and, um, also, you know, it, this is a range and depending on the experience and depending on the, um, qualifications of the person, you know, we will be able to, um, give that person, um, a, the salary within a range that, uh, his qualifications and experience, um, dovetails with. So, um, I think the range that we currently have is something that has that flexibility. And if we get somebody really good, we could start them, you know, closer to the top of the range. If we get somebody who's new, but very, you know, without a lot of experience, but having the right, um, attitude and willingness to, uh, address, um, you know, our needs, then we, we can adjust, um, adjust in that regard as well. And, and we want people who are gonna have their motivation be to serve the city. Um, I remember when we were recruiting for police at one point and to Chief Magnus's credit, he always said, you know, we don't need to, uh, think about getting those police officers who want the highest salary. We wanna get those police officers who have the right attitude. So I would put that out there in terms of how we recruit this, um, fire chief. And I, you know, I think, uh, where we're at is fine. So I'm, I'm gonna, um, go along with that.
Okay, is there a motion? Um, I don't see a motion, so I guess we'll move on to the next item.
Our next item is item J one. And in, any individuals that would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button. Comment by phone, press the star and the number nine key. And just where, please repeat that in Spanish, please.
Si desea dar comentarios sobre el tema de la agenda J una, por favor levante su mano ahora. Para comentar por computadora, seleccione la opción de participante en la parte de abajo de su pantalla y seleccione la opción que dice raise hand para levantar su mano. Para comentar por teléfono o prima estrella nueve. Gracias.
Item J one is to approve a legal services agreement with Goldfarb and Lippman, LLP to advise and represent the city in pending litigation with a payment limit of one hundred thousand for services rendered from February first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And this is the last call for speakers, and it looks like we have four speakers for this item.
Okay, uh, city attorney, this is your item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Teresa Stricker, city attorney. Um, I have brought forward this item to request your approval of a legal services agreement with Goldfarb and Lippman, uh, with a not to exceed value, so up to a hundred thousand dollars, um, for, um, advice, services and representation in connection with pending litigation. Um, and the pending litigation in this particular matter is, uh, Richmond Shoreline Alliance versus, uh, the, um, city of Richmond. Um, I am, uh, seeking your approval for this contract and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, are there any questions? Councilor McLaughlin?
Yeah, this isn't a question. It's more of a comment. And I know I did have a little email exchange last week with, um, with the city attorney on this. Um, so my concern, well, there's two things. One, I think we need to put, this is one of those big items that we need to put in the agenda report um, or in the title of the agenda, what project it is for. In this case, the Campus Bay project. That would be very helpful in the future. Um, and the other thing is, you know, this is such a heavy, such a controversial and important health and safety issue for our community, this whole issue of, um, the Campus Bay project. Um, and the loss in the league and the litigation surrounding it, um, that we need to make sure we have the right firm on board that will adhere to what the council wants, um, to happen. And, um, this firm may be the right firm, but I would prefer to not, um, allocate that whole hundred thousand dollars. And, um, I initially was saying, how about ten thousand dollars? And, and the city attorney said, well, it would be more realistic to utilize maybe forty thousand if you wanted a smaller amount because that would at least give them some time to get into an analysis. And I'm fine with that. So I would, I would suggest that we approve, um, I, we approve this, um, agreement for forty thousand rather than a hundred thousand and also have that, um, have this firm come to us with their analysis and we could determine then if they're working in, in the way we want them and, you know, giving us the information we need and we could raise it at a certain point. I, I would feel more comfortable doing it that way.
Um, any other questions or comments from council members? Councilman Jimenez?
Yeah, uh, I think like, I, I want Teresa to, to answer this, like, uh, this comment. Um, because I, I, what I, what I understand is that even if we approve the hundred, um, it's not that we are going to give it, like, it's committed, all that. This is hourly rate. So if, just like, I think like getting to your point, Gail, uh, that if we don't, if we don't think that this is the firm or is not like getting that, it could be terminated and have another firm. So I just want Teresa, could you explain a little more on that?
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to, council member. Um, yes, this, this is an hourly based contract. And so the amount of the contract is a, is a not to exceed. In other words, um, without amending this and coming back to get more money from all of you, um, there, we can't pay more than a hundred thousand, but the firm ultimately only gets paid for the work done based on the hourly rate. And so if, for example, um, the, the firm started doing work for us and we decided that the firm was not a right fit, um, as we would with any of our legal services agreements, we would, um, we could, we, we remain free to, um, uh, retain a different firm. And the, the first firm would only get paid for the work that they've actually done. And so we're not committing the funds, um, they won't get the funds unless they do the work. And you remain free to, um, we all remain free to decide that, um, we may or may not be happy with any particular firm's work and can, can switch at that point. So I do understand council member McLaughlin's concerns. Um, but, uh, from my perspective, we have the same flexibility. Um, and, um, this way, if you are happy with the firm's work, then we can keep the firm working and doing the work for us without having to potentially stop um, and wait to get back to you, um, with, on your agenda to get back for an amendment. So my request is for a hundred thousand, but certainly, um, if you are gonna cut it down, forty thousand is much more manageable than, than ten.
Uh, Councilor Willis?
Um, I guess because I talked to the city attorney about this too. And my first initial reactions is that there really isn't, I don't see anything too problematic about it, other than just ascertaining information about the landscape we're in and weighing out those options. But I guess, uh, if it's helpful, I would like to introduce a compromise from what I'm hearing. And that compromise is essentially, we do just like approve the agreement just for the sole source of getting advice and advice alone to understand what's going on. However, have like a milestone, uh, in there. That's like, once we get to that point where we paid out forty thousand dollars, have like an evaluation on if we're happy with the direction that we're going into, or do we wish to, um, you know, jump ship? Either way it goes, from what I hearing, there's nothing stopping us from doing that even without that, but just to make it more intentional. But I do think knowing more is important, just to be able to have the tools we need about what's going on.
So I, I would, um, if, if, uh, you may, if you're considering that compromise, I think it would be good to have a milestone to come back. It is my intention to come back to all of you anyway. Um, I would ask that you direct me to, to come back, um, when, you know, we're, we're at that rough place rather than baking it into the contract, which may be difficult from a, um, you know, once they've spent the money, I may not know about it and then we might need to stop doing the work. So I would, I would ask that if you're gonna go that route, that you direct me that once about that amount has come forward, if I haven't already come forward to you, that, um, we do a check-in.
Oh, we have public speakers?
I, I want to make a comment. You know, we're seriously handicapping, uh, city attorney. If you think that forty thousand dollars, I mean, she could have two cases that she has to represent the city and defend it. That would eat up quickly. And I don't understand why eventually she's gonna have to come forward and we might as well provide that limit anyway. And she's gonna report what it's gonna cost. But, uh, tell a, uh, attorney that you can only spend up to forty thousand dollars. I mean, what if she had four cases that came forward? That doesn't make sense.
I think this is just for one case.
Okay, um.
Well, anybody that knows that when you go into litigation, forty thousand dollars get eaten up and within a couple of weeks. So, uh, I don't understand why we gotta restrict our city attorney in that regard. So I won't support the, uh, motion.
Uh, before we call, call public speakers, I'm gonna need a motion to continue the meeting.
I move, we continue the meeting, um, to finish the last two items. Take on that.
But not to exceed eleven thirty, right?
Right.
Yeah, discussion on the item. I'm just gonna mention personally with respect to all my colleagues. I'll stay till eleven thirty, but I ask that we just kind of deal with the items itself because if we reach the eleven thirty mark, I'm not gonna support another extension past that.
Okay, um, call the public speakers, please.
Hey, the four public speakers are Deborah Behr, Jim Hansen, Sally Tobin and Tarnell Abbott. I'll start with Deborah. Deborah, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I saw the item about the attorney and I wish I had known. Uh, I had to find out that it was about, um, the AstraZeneca site. Um, and so I also wish it, that kind of, those kind of agenda items be more clear. So we don't have to investigate, you know? Otherwise I look at things and the agenda makes no sense. Um, I, I think it's fine if you hire the attorney. What I'm more interested in is what you're hiring the attorney for. And I would urge the council to not to hire attorney to help you figure out how to get out of the contract of the bad mistake that was made in December and the contract that you guys signed, which you bound yourself up in, in which, um, you know, you, you've accepted, um, um, a development on a toxic, on a super fund site, basically, without adequate cleanup. And so many people talked to you before you did that. Um, you, the, the community advisory group that has worked for fifteen years on, uh, studying this issue told you, um, and you still, the council still went ahead and did it. And, um, so I, I, I just urge you to, to, uh, use the lawyer to reverse course and work with the, uh, Richmond Shoreline Alliance to stop the development instead of, um, fighting, fighting off the, uh, secret challenge when the right's not on your side in that, in, on the city's side, unless the city changes its mind. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jim Hansen. Jim, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Thank you, Jim Hansen, Richmond. Council, mayor and staff, thank you for giving some basic information on, on what the project, uh, involves. I'd, um, like to say that there are also some very important, particularly with this project, some very important city financial health issues in the, uh, Zenica Development Agreement. And, um, for instance, did you know that under the development agreement approved last year, the development developer of this, uh, toxic waste site would, would only be responsible for a very limited liability under section three twelve pollution legal liability policy, uh, property damage, bodily injury, government and third-party cleanup orders, often, uh, on and off-site remediation, environmental response costs, resource damages from pre-existing and new environmental, uh, conditions, limit the developer's total liability to twenty-five million. So why is there no cap on what the city could potentially pay? For another, another item, the, the agreement gives the developer the right to require the city to get involved in Melrose bonds for their project and then make the city pay for any costs they incur, uh, with managing these bonds for their project, including legal costs. A city is supposed to determine if they wanna get involved in Melrose bonds. That's not something that we can or should be, uh, give, you know, a, a signing to a private developer that has no responsibility to the residents. So I think really, uh, I guess it just really boils down to, uh, we really do need, need good legal representation and legal assistance and that we're looking forward that these people would look out for the public interest too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sally Tobin. Sally, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm Sally Tobin. I'm a Richmond resident. And I'd like to address what seems to be tonight's recurring theme, which is disclosure. Um, in order for voters to have confidence in government, it's important for those in government to make information available. This item was placed on the consent calendar for the previous city council meeting and there is still no information about what issue the law firm is being asked to address. This limits transparency and suggests that there's something to hide. In addition, such strategies come across as paternalistic and disrespectful. Must each of us phone to find out that this deals with legal issues about the proposed Campus Bay development? What is the issue that the law firm will address? It is not stated. What qualifications are required? What are they being asked to do? How is this law firm equipped to do the job? Attorneys are not interchangeable widgets anymore than doctors or other professionals. What are the individual and collective strengths and perspectives of the members of this firm? The city needs attorneys with depth who will identify and promote the well-being of the people of Richmond. Do the proposed attorneys meet this standard? It is impossible to tell because of the lack of posted information. The Richmond community is overwhelmingly in favor of a complete cleanup of the Campus Bay site, option six, before development. How will this item serve them and who is going to evaluate their performance? Thanks very much.
Thank you. Last speaker is Tarnell Abbott. Tarnell, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this was a very confusing issue. Um, and I guess if, if this is a law firm that will help the, uh, city of save money in the long run by swiftly settling the lawsuit based on health and safety issues, it could save the city an extraordinary amount of legal fees and diverted citywide energies that should be dedicated to finding solutions for a. for a full cleanup of the shoreline sites, which had prior unwavering city council and community support. Um, if you're hiring them to fight the community in court, well, it's a lose, losing proposition. Um, it, the outgoing council did not heed public comment warnings that Cal EPA vapor intrusion standards were undergoing more restrictive changes. These were announced in February of twenty twenty. The new protective vapor intrusion standards were triggered by findings that TCE is much more carcinogenic at lower concentrations and exposures than previously known. TCE is one of the most prevalent VOCs on the Zenica, AKA, uh, Campus Bay site. There is also huge concerns and issues about sea level rise and the impact of that on the, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards of toxic material that is buried on the site. No barrier underneath or surrounding it and the, and it is going to forever leach into the bay and the marsh and the bay and the properties that are adjacent. And it's really gonna be a dangerous situation for anybody who lives in the housing out there, especially during an earthquake or, like I said, with sea level rise, which is projected.
Your time has expired, thank you. And that was the last public speaker.
Okay, uh, is there a motion?
There was a motion by Councilmember McLaughlin, seconded by, uh, Councilmember.
She made a motion already?
I don't think I made a motion, but I will make, there is no.
Go ahead, you can.
Okay.
Sorry. So, um, my preference would have been to do forty thousand because I, and I'm not gonna make that motion, but I wanna share my perspective here. Because when you have a, a new firm that you're not familiar with, and I realize it's up to a hundred thousand, it's not as easy to tell someone, hey, I'm sorry, you're not doing what we want you to do after, you know, you've only spent forty thousand. But if they know they have forty thousand in their contract and, you know, they know what the council is expecting from them, perhaps they'll be put on notice or they'll be more inclined and more motivated to give us what we want or to work toward what we want so that, um, you know, so that we will keep them on and expand the contract. But I hear what, um, I hear my council colleagues are thinking that a hundred thousand is fine. And, um, with the, um, amendment or with an amendment that I think, uh, Councilmember Willis was putting out there in terms of, um, after around forty thousand, we wanna hear from our city staff. Uh, we wanna, um, at least discuss this and give feedback as to how we think things are moving forward in terms of this really, really important, um, issue surrounding health and safety, toxicity, um, and concerns about like liability going forward, how the city could be, um, facing liability of a greater nature than it faces currently, um, if development is allowed to go forward. So, um, we have, we have a lot of concerns about this issue. I'll go along with making the motion for up to one hundred thousand with a check in with staff at around forty thousand spent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Willis, uh, call roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bates?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
And Mayor Butt?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay, call the next item.
Next item is item J two. Anyone that would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button. If you're joining us by video, joining us by phone, press the star and then number nine key. And just for, would you please repeat this in Spanish?
Si desea dar comentarios sobre el tema de la agenda J dos, por favor levante su mano ahora. Para comentar por computadora, seleccione la opción de participante en la parte de abajo de su pantalla y seleccione la opción que dice raise hand para levantar su mano. Para comentar por teléfono o prima estrella nueve. Gracias.
Item J two is to announce recent resignations from the City of Richmond Boards, Commissions and Committees and announce vacancies as of February seventeenth, twenty twenty one and ask that interested individuals send applications to the city clerk. And there are no hands raised for speakers.
Okay, um, this, this is my item and I'm in the interest of time. Um, I'm not gonna read all these out, I'm just got the, uh, list of vacancies is, uh, in the council packet. Um, we have a total of fifty-two vacancies on, uh, numerous boards and commissions and anyone who's interested can, um, apply online at the city clerk's office. And, um, we'd really like to, really like to fill these positions. Uh, any questions or comments? Uh, Councilmember Jimenez?
Uh, yeah, thank you for announcing that, I just have a question. You asked me to support you to get some, uh, applicants to, for the RIN Board and there had been some applicants there, so I wonder when are you going to make the appointment for the RIN Board?
Um, I'm going, uh, they're still coming in, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait till I get them all in and then, uh, review them all. I'm, I'm getting in about one a day.
Okay.
Okay, uh, let's go to the next item, Madam Clerk.
Our last item, Mr. Reports of Officers, refer us to staff and general reports, including AB one, two, three, four reports.
Um, anybody have reports?
I, I don't have a report, but I'm certain you're gonna, uh, adjourn the meeting in recognition of, uh, Mr. John Knox. I had, I had, I had a couple of comments I wanted to make before you do it.
Okay, um, I, okay, with that, I'm gonna go to adjournment memorials. Um, the first one, the first one I have is, uh, Denise Brown Mestas. Uh, Denise Brown Mestas passed away on Sunday, February twenty eighth. She was a Richmond resident who lived in the north and east neighborhood. She was a member of Los Bombares de La Bahia on all women Puerto Rican drumming, dancing and singing group. On behalf of the city council and City of Richmond staff, we extend our deepest condolences to the family of Ms. Brown Mestas. Uh, the second one is for, uh, John Knox Jr. Uh, we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of longtime Richmond residents, resident John Knox Jr. Passed away on Saturday, February twenty seventh. Um, Mr. Knox is the son of former state assemblyman John Knox who represented Contra Costa County from nineteen sixty through nineteen eighty. Uh, J- John worked for many years for, uh, the Oric Law Firm. He was an expert on municipal bonds and, uh, provided counsel for the city on many bond issues. I might, I might add that the social impact bonds that the, that the, um, Richmond Community Foundation is using to, uh, rehab and provide low-cost housing was, uh, John's idea. Uh, his son Alex was my chief of staff for, we worked on my staff for about, uh, five years, I think, and he was my, uh, chief of staff at one time. Uh, his sister Antonia also, uh, worked on the, on my staff as an intern. So on behalf of the city council and the City of Richmond, we extend our deepest condolences to the Knox family. Uh, Pastor Bates?
I just wanna add that, um, John is also the son of Gene Knox, who was a Contra Costa College Board of Director and during the time I was at Contra Costa College. So I've known the Knoxes for a long, long period of time and, uh, he's gonna definitely be missed by a citizen of Richmond. He contributed so much to this community, so thank you.
Okay, any others? Okay, thank you, everyone. I'm inclined to adjourn this meeting at this time. Have a nice evening.
You too. It's eleven fourteen. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.